Order, we'll start with pledge release.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in command, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Holt.
Here.
Chris Eagan.
Here.
Kent Trunetsky.
Here.
Kelly Coyle.
Here.
Alex Bebick. Aaron Mishkin.
Here.
Craig Whitenson.
Here. All right, item number two, we have an announcement close session later on the agenda. Item number three, comment. We have, first up is Sean Dumein.
Name and address, sir. Sean Dumein. Eight, three, nine, oh, poof. Tonight, I'd like to address a couple of the issues that's on the agenda. And I'd also like to kind of tie these all into the frustration our community's feeling right now. So, item H, which is obviously a permit for our facility. I'm geared to answer any questions if anyone has any, but I'm kind of frustrated that the board, once again, pulled this off of there after the same person comes in here with the same lies for six years. It's getting a little bit old. You're hurting our business. We can't have insurance without our license. We can't have other things, and now we're in a mess because we just decided to pull it off for no reason. Item G. I'd just like to know why that took so long. The chief's report was within four or five days of when we made the report of that issue. This didn't need to become a big spectacle. It simply was a, hey, something didn't go right, let's fix it. The fix would have been come to a board meeting, make an ordinance resolution, one of the other many easy ways that you have to fix it, and we could be done with it. But instead, we let it fester for months, and the community and the citizens, everybody on Facebook, everybody in the store, all talking, just making it worse and worse and worse, creating even more drama and problems. And it's getting people to not like staff and not like board members. And you guys could have stopped it instantly. It could have been done after that report was done. Chief didn't take more than five days to get it done. He did his part and was done. Item Q, if anybody wants to get a pencil. State statute 61, dot 261. You do not have the authority to deputize a person to be the deputy treasurer. The statute states that the treasurer, under your guidance and your approval, has the authority to do it, not the board. So I don't even know why that's on there. Nobody even thought to look and see if we're doing something legal again. My final thing is, I just ask, please do your research, do your study. Every single meeting, we have things getting passed that shouldn't be passed. We've got processes that aren't being followed. We look to you, we expect you guys to do it. We shouldn't have to constantly send emails or constantly have discussions on Facebook about what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. We create more and more issues like that. Things like, simple things, subcommittee. We don't have an ambulance subcommittee. A subcommittee is a sub of an already existing unit. We have an ad hoc committee. Doesn't seem very big, but it makes us look dumb, because we have all kinds of dumb things not done right. So, please, let's do our research when we make decisions. Thank you.
Next up is Brady Kramer.
Good evening, Mr. President and Administrator. I happened to get a couple of copies from somebody.
Hey, Brady, can you state your name and address, please? Pardon? Name and address, please?
Oh, Brady Kramer. Thank you. Twenty-one fifty, East State Avenue one fifty-three, Patmore.
Thank you.
Like I said, it was a thought. You and Alex had some information on there. And one thing you have in common is that you all feel good about stepping on Mr. Trunetsky's throat. It seems to only give you some legitimacy. You talked about the code of conduct. The village attorney said to refer to the Wisconsin municipalities' ethics laws. Look at all the money wasted on the end, along with the Corona water code of conduct policy. You know, I never will understand how a trustee can have such antagonistic thoughts and conduct towards another trustee. I mean, I've served on a lot of committees and organizations in my life, and I don't know how you would screw your head around to direct that kind of antagonism to one board member and figure that was okay. Then, then we had, in Corona water, we had the tornado invade Corona water, threatening to destroy Trunetsky's little village. Look what happened last year, pre-election, post-election. Trustees, which are here tonight, plus staff, carried on quite a charade in public input. And I've never seen anything like that before. And also, there's, somebody said, we have to support staff. We respect staff, but staff is hired to support the board. You hire staff to do your work so you, so they can make good decisions for the community. And they also work for the citizens. Look what Peter comes. He comes with a big pile of paper here, and he puts a lot of time in. But I mean, in the meantime, he is working to support the board. I mean, the board really, in terms of detail, depends on the staff in terms of support. Ambulance, I want to just bring up one thing about the ambulance, and that is the training and the credits it takes to become a paramedic. You know, two full semesters beyond what the standard is for AP or EMT, and that's a total of sixty hours, working with doctors in hospitals and clinics directly. I mean, you have to respect that. I, I think that's the one thing that we don't respect enough. We just are thinking about the dollars. But I think we, we need more than just two ambulances and two, and two drivers. We, we have to think about the medical profession, and that's why we have an ambulance service that we contract with directly. And I think we are fortunate with Riverside, with their high standards. And, and I hope we keep that in our mind. You know, you say you only need the paramedics, you know, maybe ten percent of the time. Well, I look at it this way. What if we send our police officers out and said, hell, you don't need your guns, only, what, once a year, twice a year? They'll, you, you just, we'll issue them maybe, you know, half the time or whatever. But I mean, they have to be prepared. They're trained, they're prepared in all aspects of the law. And that's important with the medical profession. So, I thank you. Good luck, everybody.
All right, well, what up? Item number four, reports from staff and vendors. We have item C, oh, the work director, he's almost over there.
Thank you. With my report there, just want to talk about the furnace that went out at Wellhouse for pump number one building there. It was something that has been in need for the last couple of years here, but there were just greater needs that, with our finances, that we took care of at Wellhouse One. Now, this, according to Mark Mackey, who kind of brought me up to speed here. And the furnace finally did go out about a week or so ago, so we got that fixed. It was something that we didn't feel that we should wait until the next UCD meeting to bring it out there, because we do have money to buy ship. So, with the middle winter, with the going out already, we replaced it. So, it was brought to President Paul, he approved it. So, we have plenty of money in that line item, so just want to let everybody know that it's taken care of. Further down here, for the two-bit project, we had the road bid opening on Friday. So, we planned about four million dollars roughly for just the road aspect of it. Well, the numbers came back at three point one four six million, eight hundred fifty thousand less than what we thought. So, I don't have a part of the packet, because it came in very late from Roth this afternoon here, so we'll talk about it in a couple of weeks. So, we just want to double-check the numbers again, make sure everything's accurate before I make a full presentation to the board about that. But I just want to let everybody know that the numbers came back in really well, about eight hundred fifty thousand less, and we'll get to it. So, we have the listation contract bid opening coming up in February, so we'll know the other half that coming up. So, otherwise, that's all I have. If anybody has any questions.
Yeah, I got a question about the park plan.
Yep.
I remember, and this was done five years ago. At that time, I suggested that the committee and you, or Pete, or not you at the time, but the guy who was in your position. Do we need not central planning to write up a park plan? It's, it's just, it's almost the same as the one before, which is almost the same as the one before. You just have to change a few numbers. And last time, I thought they charged us three thou- three thousand dollars or something for this?
Yeah, it's, it's actually six thousand dollars for that. It was approved, we put it in the budget back in November, so that did get approved back then. The reason that it's in there is because without this, we don't qualify for many grant fund opportunities for the next five years of the projects, for the parks. So that was the reason that the board voted to include that.
Well, that's what they told us last time.
Right. If nobody applied for any grants, then...
But the grants, the park plan doesn't have to be professionally created. All, all you have to have is a park plan. And it can be fairly simple, you know, that we are looking at making sure, you know, that subdivisions donate land instead of money, or, or our goal is to put more swing sets in, or any of this. I mean, it's just something that CLIP, and, and the citizens can get together, take a little plan, keep the format, change some of the goals. I mean, given our cash situation, I, I think we've got to think twice about some of these expenditures.
Would anybody have an idea what we received from grant money over that process?
In the past five years, I'm not quite sure what we received for grants, but I guess going forward with any projects that we want to do, because there's a lot of hundred percent grants, fifty percent match grants, plenty of K, all that stuff. I know they always require an upper rate plan with this for the next five years. So, I don't know historical work to be done in the past for this, but I know I want to be very proactive with getting grants money, just free money from whoever is good. So...
I actually asked the same question five years ago, and I got the same answer. They, they didn't get any grants, but they plan to in the future.
Right.
And I don't remember. I don't know if you guys remember getting any grants for parks.
I don't know.
And hopefully, you have better luck. But, but the point is, this doesn't have to be, you know, a perfect professional plan. It just needs to be a plan that, that the village, you know, approves.
Sure, sure. And when we take it to CLIP next week, they choose to deny it, then, then we can go from there, I guess.
So, Gray, can you find out the ramifications if we don't use lower central finding to create this sort of plan?
Absolutely.
And then, can you also look and see, maybe on the G-drawn, if there's any indication of grants we may have received through grants we've applied for?
Absolutely.
But I'm not sure where on the G-drawn you start from.
Maybe, maybe look up some of the old past, like work director. And I'll, I'll talk to Brady as well, to see what kind of knowledge of what has been spent as well. So, yeah, I'll find out for sure.
Great. And then, everything going okay with the filtration plan? I see it was online at the last second.
Yes, it went online. Minor hiccups with it, few valves sticking, backflow of things, but nothing that's inhibiting water or the usage of it. So, just talking with Joe or anything, trying to get, just saying square words, just initial bugs, but the system itself is working perfectly.
So, we back to regular size amount of pumps, well, and...
Indeed.
Or one, do we?
Yep, normal operation now.
Because before we were muddling it. Gray, any else you're over?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the whole thing with the parks, I mean, I know there's been a lot of CLIP meetings that were canceled this year, and frankly, I do think our parks are pretty sad for the area, the condition of them compared to other communities around here. I mean, I, I mean, I know there's not been a lot of desire by the board to spend capital dollars on park improvements, but I do believe nice parks are a draw for the area and health property values, and make it a more desirable place for families to live, no matter what age, grandparents as well, if they have grandchildren visiting, for example. The other thing, too, kind of look in, you know, the, the road dollar amount being so much lower, did they cite a reason why it was so much lower than what was originally forecast?
Just the benefit of the beds, I guess, this year, so, not quite sure.
I mean, I guess it's still early, but did they indicate they thought that might
be the case in the future?
Like, I mean, we have a lot of road upgrade needs in this village. You know, until this last budget year, our road maintenance budget had not increased, coming back, you know, twenty fifteen from a twelve-dollar amount. Obviously, inflation's been around for a long time. I think, you know, I think our roads have continually been deteriorating here over the last decade, right? There probably is a lot of needs going forward.
Right. Yeah, it's one of the things that we're going to do when we go over the bid line items or anything, just to be sure everything's accurate, that the numbers weren't screwed with or anything like that. Then reach out to the contractor and find out, you know, just simple questions like that, like, is this something that we can hold a number to this year going forward? Just find out what the industry standard is right now, if things are leveling, oh, and more work is getting harder to come by. Don't know. So, those are the things that we're going to have to figure out.
Okay. Well, thanks. Then with the filtration plant, too, that will be online. Just want to inform the board, one thing the utility committee has been looking at has been, so, the filtration plan kind of was delayed a bit. We are entitled to enforce liquidated damages in our contract. We kind of gave them one extension. What we've been discussing as a utility committee is calculating out what those types of damages would be to ratepayers. So, one we've kind of centered in on has been, okay, well, our contractors, I think they had to have a in-service date of November thirteenth last year. We gave them kind of one extension with the lead time issues. However, since the filtration plant came online on the twenty-third, right? That was the in-service date?
Second?
Twenty-second, twenty-sixth, so, was that just over two months? There's been a carrying cost of interest on that. So, while we're entitled up to a certain amount, you still kind of have to show what those damages were. So, in our opinion, and we haven't gotten there, we have to calculate that, but that interest cost for those couple of months that are repairs, we have to look for, plus any additional engineering fees specifically for the supervisory contract. So, probably, I don't know off the top of my head, it has to be calculated, but probably something like twenty to thirty grand is what we're thinking of. I know we have the construction contractor at our meetings. They did appear to be minimal for that. But I just wanted everyone to be aware that, you know, we're looking out for the ratepayers. And we're fortunate, we were able to do this with a zero percent rate hike on the water utility side.
Any else you'd like to work? Hit, what add to the vote?
I guess I'll just take questions. There's a lot of miscellaneous on here. You have to answer any questions.
What is that zero lot line language? Who's driving that?
That's being driven by a developer who is looking at a large, I believe it's like a hundred and nine lot subdivision to include numerous, I think around nineteen, zero lot line properties, which basically is, you've got a smaller-sized parcel, makes it more affordable, with a duplex that's basically renting a lot line.
But it's not a duplex, because you're not renting them. You're selling them as individual.
Two different individual owners, different water hookup, but they're...
You can think of it as a condo, but it's not really a condo.
Yeah, they've been, Danians have been building a lot of those in Weston.
Yep, Weston.
Particularly, and then a few other communities, you know, that was the thing when I was at WPS there. We'd be getting a lot of those. It's been, it's been being pushed more often. What's different is that there's a firewall between each unit, so they're, from a code perspective.
So, it'd be like two, two lots with, like, they're right in the middle of these two lots?
Yep.
You got a wall.
They can be attached, or they can be detached, but most of them, like you said, have a firewall in between.
Okay. I had no intention of even discussing that. I was just kind of curious, because it's like, wouldn't you just build in the middle of one lot and be done with it, you know, instead of having to...
Well, lots are smaller.
Yeah, the lot would be like a ten thousand square foot lot versus twenty thousand.
But I thought our organs, so we...
As part of a...
As part of the community.
Okay, so it's a...
More shacks, you know.
I see. All right. When I, and I believe the cost to develop was about seventy-five grand less on each one versus a conventional, something like that.
Yep.
Okay, that's correct.
It's been allowed for, for separate homes, you know, of that same building.
I was confused by it, so it's... Yeah, it's, okay. We've been, we've been talking about the planning commission a couple of different times, and we just haven't been able to further repeat it to the board or research.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot of code implications with that though, too, so, I don't know. It's usually more involved for saying that, for example, on a, on a building, we'll talk about electric service. You're only allowed one electric service on a building. Each one would get separate, because they have a firewall, but it's up to the local municipality to determine that it's a firewall. That's kind of a unique circumstance, so that's something that I should do update from a safety standpoint. It's kind of a weird situation. It's kind of a hole in the, I call it a hole in the stands in code, but it's confusing, because it's different by each state. It would be up to Ron Letter to approve the final design, that it would be in compliance.
Okay, you have mentioned here possible sale of village-owned property off Corona Water Drive.
Yeah.
What's the situation with that lot, that Daniel was going to make their headquarters on?
I...
That was a few years ago, and, and I, I don't remember what the contract actually was, but it's, I don't see anything going up there.
No, looking at, I would...
Pete, is this the same property, or is that something different? He asked about a property that was on there, he talked about selling. Is that the same piece of property?
That's one of them, yes, yeah. And that particular property, I believe he's in default of his development agreement. He did pay forty-five hundred dollars, and I have somebody else that's interested in it. And I guess I'd probably have to talk to our legal counsel about, is it pretty clear that we can now opt in somebody else, or is there any little attachments within the contract itself?
Looks like he's making a note of it. He's writing it down.
Okay, good. And the other parcels are south of, I guess they call it JX Trucking. Yeah, I'm just trying to come up with a number. I think most likely, if, I don't have a clear understanding of what they want to develop there to offset or to add increment, I'd have to get a basis done, but it's got to go through processes, as far as RDA, ABC, bill of order. We had it kind of all hit by once, so I have three different people interested in some of those lots now in the last two weeks.
And now, entry number three there, that certified survey map for Happy Hollow, what portion of Happy Hollow is that?
That was within that property that Prohaska had. And he just created a really odd shape-looking lot in there for his son to build a home on.
Any else for you? All right, thanks, Pete. All right, moving on, item E, which trailer report?
Are we supposed to ask questions?
No, I'm just going to go through things to start off. So, my name's Lee Trioni. I'm the village attorney. I have been for not, not even two years. Yeah. Uh, two years and eight, I think, towards the end of April.
And you started...
Right here.
Right, when I got on board, yeah.
Yeah, it was really bad election happened. All right. We got new board members, and I don't even know if we did this the first time around, actually, but, uh, so, present, I should, I tell you about myself a little bit. This summer, I've been an attorney twenty years. My first two years, I worked for a circuit court judges, five of them actually, which was a temporary-type job. And then I went to the Wisconsin Towns Association. I was there for eight and a half years. It's kind of the equivalent to the lead municipalities go for towns. That's where I learned municipal law. It's a, it's a lobby group, so it's legislative things. We meet a lot of model ordinances and stuff. And it was, probably the biggest part was just education. So, we went around the state all the time and put out educational programs for local officials. Basics were pretty regular every election cycle, records, meetings, ethics, you know, et cetera. And maybe a summary of duties, that we do, you know, as new laws came out that we were active lobbying, and then the next phase is you have to teach everyone what they're supposed to do now. So, we did a lot of those programs, which are a lot more specialized, did board review training. We partnered with state agencies to do that, and, you know, other groups, UW Extension. UW Extension used to have a place called the Global Government Center. It's kind of, it's kind of gone now. The shelf itself is still there. It happened when UW reorganized a couple of years ago. That's one of the things that kind of got dialed back. So, there's less of that free public education, because those are the guys are barely doing that. And actually, the associations did a lot of materials for that, so. Free, what would you call it? We do video conferencing now all the time, pre-video conferencing. We actually did these phone conference programs for Extension, and we'd have people just dial this number, and they'd be on the phone, it'd be like a state line teleconference, and that's how we did it back in the day. So, later on, private practice, a little over nine, nine or ten years ago, I guess. And so, in private practice, switching from association-type work, did, you know, what I'm doing now. So, basically, the actual municipal attorney for municipal entities, which is a different role than what I was doing before. I work for dozens of municipal entities right now. You have, in private practice, you work for the people that are too small to have someone in the house, so you need to stay in a little. My firm, I, there's like three other guys there, but most of them work in my firm. So, our firm represents, we just tried to count, it was about a hundred and thirty different municipalities, running town, city, village, special purpose districts, and sanitary districts, a few schools, those types of things. I used to do some private practice side work. If it's somewhere that's not inclined, you don't have a conflict, or especially a county permitting issue, you don't work for any counties. Kind of phased that out, just because we have, prefer the municipal side, and we just have enough of it. So, I've pretty much just been in the municipal side from, uh, all manner of things, so.
Okay. If you have any questions, so? If you have any questions, so.
And I do basically all municipal law at this time. I think I'm the only person in the region that does that. In different parts of the state, the Fox Valley, kind of the southeast, there's more firms and attorneys dedicated towards just that subject area. Um, otherwise, most people are doing, you know, four or five things and that might be one of them, so I just actually do this. Alright. So just going on. Let's see what we need to do here, whether we take it one at a time or if I just follow the way through. I almost do one at a time in case of basic questions, I'm sure it is. Uh, there's a letter in the packet just from Wisconsin Department of Revenue officially approved our ten-two amendment that we worked on the past year. Um, that wasn't real easy, we had to figure out a way to get the, grow something or else they would have been included. Uh, the engineer and I did, uh, rock. He and I worked at that quite a bit and we think, we figured we had it. Um, the letter here, you know, you're on your own factually to get it done right. They're not reviewing your actual work, they're reviewing the thing globally. So that's why you gotta get it done right at a global level, and we did that. Uh, any questions out? Hey, I'll just keep moving, this one stops me. There's also a letter in there. Pretty shortly after I started, there was a, a dust up from a board member recording part of a closed session, helped me announce later. And some people were upset with that. It's not actually illegal, and I wrote a legal opinion on that at the time. Uh, Wisconsin's what's called a one-party recording state, which means if one party agrees to record something, it's okay. Well, the one party is usually the person who decides to record something. Um, the other part of it is they ask, it's questionable whether it even was a public record or anything like that because it was made clearly for his own notes. So I, it wasn't even my opinion. Um, but we didn't reach that issue because really nothing was wrong with recording anything. So the district attorney, they take a long time when you refer things to district attorney, because this was two years ago. Uh, trustee Cherneski made a complaint to the district attorney's office. It took nearly two years for them to say they're not gonna do anything. Um, that's the usual pattern, it seems like to me. It's not a priority, whether it's the detectives or the district attorneys, they have a lot of things to do. Uh, they're chronically shorthanded. I know RBA's office just, uh, had four people leave past few weeks, so they're just chronically shorthanded. And this isn't, they don't understand municipal law very well, so it's hard for them to do it. And, uh, it just takes a long time, so that's typical. But funny was, you know, in line with what I had in my legal opinion that there's really nothing to do with it. I did, at the time, submit a sample ordinance, you can have an ordinance where you don't want a law of any accord in the closed session. I provided a sample, I think it was from City of Rimay, because they had deep done there, ordinance issued recently, and nothing ever came. So we still don't have any rules about it. That way.
Well, I got a couple of comments on that. The one thing about the one-party state, uh, after your, your, uh, legal opinion on it, I had emailed you back and forth some questions. We ended up, uh, basically both agreeing that APC and the, and the candidates we were interviewing were holding the conversation. And the other trustee was sitting in on that, uh, meeting, but not participating. So therefore, uh, we, both you and me in the discussion, we came to the conclusion, uh, he was a third party. And at the time I asked if you were going to change your opinion and you said no, so we just kind of let that lie, I guess, because, uh, according to the police, uh, chief's report, by the time it got to the DA, um, there really had not been a investigation as far as checking out the facts. And it was, um, basically referred to as an open meeting violation rather than a third-party recording. So I think that had a lot to do with, um, why they decided not to prosecute. And also if anyone wants any of this documentation, there's quite a bit, um, quite a bit between me and the DA and the chief's report and my emails to you too. In case anyone's interested in, in seeing how that worked out.
Well, since, since the contents of the recording, uh, were never shared with anyone else, they are my personal notes from sitting in that meeting and therefore it is not illegal. That is very clear in the state law that it is not illegal because I never shared the recording with anyone else. Whether they were in that closed session or not in that closed session, they were my personal notes. That's what makes them not a public record.
You, you were.
Love of God.
The, the, the DA, uh, uh, basically made the stipulation that that was a public record.
If they had been shared, if you're taking it for your personal notes.
No, I'm, I'm just going by the chief's report. I, I wasn't in the room, I'm just going by what his report says and.
Ken, you're barking, you're barking up a tree here that you're not gonna get.
I'm, I'm not, I didn't bring this up. You know, I, I.
You did actually. You're, you're the, you're the complainant in this, so therefore you did bring it up.
Well, back then, not tonight, not tonight.
Teen times.
I just.
That there was not a case there.
No, I wasn't told teen times.
Okay.
So.
So.
I do wanna note it though.
Like I say, the documentation is available.
I do, I do just wanna say from my perspective, you did assert, because I was investigated by the police.
Mm-hmm.
Because you asserted as well, I just wanna point that out, that, you know, you just said definitively that it had been shared with me, which was determined to be a lie, which is false, I just wonder how.
That came from, from your reaction the next day, you talked as if you had seen that. So that was just part of it.
And then, you know, I'd like to add that once you didn't get the answer you wanted, then you had Joel Strad reaching out to me and pestering me about this, uh, recording. So, oh, don't, don't tell me you didn't know about it.
Well, I don't know if I didn't know about it, but I didn't have one.
He started messaging me on, on this past Easter. Easter morning, I start getting emails from him about this recording, that would mean you're in the past.
That's not me. I don't know why you're talking to me about that, I, I, I don't.
Well, he, he wouldn't have been on the board, so he really only wanted to find out about it one way there, Ken.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Well, we just wanted to close the loop on it since we got.
Yeah, why don't you move ahead?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, uh, uh, again, uh, for just one more time, the documentation is there for anybody who wants to.
Knock yourself out.
Sure, there were emails, um, I forgot to mention that part. He was emailing me to try to get me to change the opinion and say that it's an illegality when there were none. And I refused to do that.
Well, okay, uh, if anybody wants to see the emails, they're there. It wasn't trying to get you to change it, it was asking you the status of if somebody's attending a meeting, are they a participant, and you said no. And if they were not a participant, therefore they were a third party and you agreed. So I, all I was doing was asking questions and going by your answers.
I would actually, if you really wanna keep this going, I would argue, I wasn't a participant because you went around the table and asked if anybody had questions for the candidates and you asked me directly. So therefore that all of a sudden makes me a participant in it. So that killed your argument there.
That never.
Why is the president?
I guess, I am interested though about, you were saying something about the trustee pressuring you to change your legal opinion? I guess that, that is a new one to me, I'd like to hear more information on that.
I'll give you the emails, Alex, I just told you I have the emails.
Yeah, we, we do have emails and feel free to read them.
I mean, is that potentially, uh, I guess, ethics issue?
We, yeah, I remember this is in the age of non-stop interim administrators and all that. So, must have been Mahoney, or we're reading the tweet again.
I think it was Mahoney.
For some reason, you know, Ken wants to ask you a question.
Might have been chief, could have been chief, might have been, I forget, there was.
I don't know, it wasn't the chief, it was Mahoney.
Okay.
It was Mahoney. It was ten or twelve minutes. Just telling me what the facts were important that I wasn't using, which they were relevant to the question. Uh, telling me that he had his own interpretations of the law, which were inaccurate. Um, it, it, I gotta be honest, when it first happened, I didn't even think it would be a big deal because those questions were so easy. Um, everyone know, well, not everyone, but pretty common knowledge for a one-party recording state. Okay, so. And I gave everyone this solution, I gave you an ordinance, if it's important, you do something about it. And like, it just proceeded to argue over months, nothing ever happened with an ordinance, and it's just totally dead now. Okay? So number four.
Um, this one final statement, don't wanna keep dragging it, I did find it interesting though. The trustee Cherneski said that I must have heard a recording because I do recall there being a disagreement because this particular meeting was about interviewing, uh, administrator, administrator, and, uh, I believe one of the results of it was, uh, uh, a statement or at least a aura of hostility towards one of the candidates that I do believe was, uh, highly qualified at the time. So I just wanna get that on the record, that we did have an opportunity to, um, hire administrator that since that time has now been, um, it's, it's open record who those candidates were, they were two finalists, is the Village of Weston administrator and has been since about one month after that interview. So just want the crowd to understand that. Um, that is what this is about, that we could have had.
That's not what it's about.
And apparently run the Village of Weston effectively for the whole time that we've been here.
This was Coyle's accusation at the village board meeting. And once he said he had this recording, he had the notes of it, and he was, wanted to show that I had some kind of different approach to each, uh, candidate. So the next day I said, well, Mr. Coyle, can you send that recording to everyone so they can hear it themselves and see what you're talking about? And by then he had already destroyed it.
You know, I seem to recall in the meeting that, uh, as I was sitting in the backseat of the car, I got Sean DuMay stand up and tell me I was going to jail.
Oh, yeah, he said you just admitted to a crime, that's what he said.
I admitted to recording for my personal notes, which is not a crime. So, and I worked, as long as we're bringing out that stuff, let's make it clear that the reason that that candidate declined to come back for a second interview was specifically cited as her treatment from Mr. Ken Cherneski. That was her reasoning, stated reasoning for declining to come back and interview a second time.
Well, that's news.
Uh, no, it's been known.
At, at the time, I understood that she had the offer from Weston, I preferred that.
That didn't come till much later.
Well, not much later. And you make these accusations like this, but now that you destroyed the recording, you can make accusations all day, which is what we've been dealing with for a couple of years.
You're the only one keeping alive.
I didn't, I didn't put it on the agenda.
All I said was that, I said, I watched two interviews take place. And your approach to the two different candidates was quite visibly different. One was very, uh, friendly and approachable, the other one was not. And it was very clear to anyone watching that there were two different approaches.
So that's kinda getting aside.
There were other people there.
Really?
And that, and that, and this, this, these are all new accusations here.
I do, I think the letter speaks for itself, that's why I sent it back in. I have one question on single-party recording.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah.
On single-party recording, so.
Yeah, vol, what's going on?
Regarding recording a minor? Like, let's say there was somebody that, um, came up and threatened to, or at least asserted that they would be recording my daughter, for example, if she ever showed up in this room again.
Uh, I think that's, I'm not aware, I, I'm not aware of that. Any else? Okay. Number four, uh, lawsuit by Oakley River LLC, that's the village. Uh, so this case was filed, it's an active lawsuit. Um, we did get an insurance defense counsel hired, um, and they're handling it, so I'm not gonna miss. That's what that insurance coverage is for. Uh, it's just the very early stages, complaint and answers, all that's happened. Um, I'll just tell you, this is my summary of that case. They're suing because they wanted a zoning change in it yet. Okay. This is well-known as a legislative action that you really have no right to. So I don't know why they even filed this case. Um, I'm not expecting a lot to come out of it. But as, as you may be aware, these lawsuits can take a while to just run their courses, even if there's nothing, no merit to them. Um, so you'll just have to wait and see and our attorney's handling it, but I don't even understand why they filed it, there's just, there's really no right to legislation change. It's the opposite of due process. Okay?
Is there a deductible that would be associated with that? Or something, I don't know, the policy?
Well, there's, I don't think it's, I think it's just up to a certain dollar, I don't, I don't think there's a big makeup. Yeah, it always falls into, well, it just seems to me like these always fall into the same category, which is like this grab bag where there's fifty thousand dollars in coverage. When, when it runs out itself, I don't think we're hit that in this case, just because there's not much to it. Um, but yeah, you just, municipal insurance is like any other insurance, if you have a lot of claims and things like that, your rates can go up or you can drop. And I've, I've talked to people who have dropped before, you know, that happens.
Is there any merit that, since you believe like this would be a like frivolous type lawsuit that you could call or sue them for the attorney fees?
Send, send them a safe harbor.
If I were doing it, I'd probably be looking at that. Cause it's, there's, most recently there was a case in the Wisconsin Supreme Court in twenty-twenty-three that confirmed what I'm talking about with no rights to a lawsuit act. So. Yeah, so I don't know what you're doing here. But, you know, with a filing fee and some paper, you can get a lawsuit started, yes. Uh, any questions about what I don't think there's much more to say about it? Reservation to rights letter by the village's insurance carrier, I put that in the chair so you guys could see what those are. Um, I don't know if you've ever seen one of those, so I just wanna explain, it helps explain how the insurance works. Okay? So these are pretty standard. The insurance companies, when their claim comes in, because timelines are usually, are often very short, they start coverage, you gotta get on, on the ball immediately. They start coverage, but they send them these letters, which says, we reserve the right to not actually provide you coverage. So if more comes out of it, such that they determine that coverage shouldn't apply, they can drop. Now that's pretty rare, I don't know if I've ever seen it, but, you know, I'm not primarily an insurance negotiator, but, uh, I haven't seen it. I can tell you, I don't think it would happen in this manner, you're talking about a decision by a body, you know, that was applied for. Um, it's totally within the scope of what the government is doing, uh, isn't it the normal course of business, you people apply for things you decide on. So it wouldn't be some sort of weird, outlandish thing that has nothing to do with, you know, the job of being a village. Um, but that could happen. Okay, so that's why you just stick to what we do and you should be fine with insurance. Alright, potential lawsuit. All right, potential lawsuit by hostile materials. Um, I heard this was definitely coming, and now I heard that it's not coming.
As I heard both, I said, I don't know where, I don't know where it is right now, but you have, it might say it's not coming.
Yeah.
They're getting close to their, uh, time to file.
So that's a conditional use permit case, which is a lot messier than, you know, a legislative type case, so, um, you know, but anyway, I don't know if it's covered anymore, they got fired up and said they're definitely gonna sue, and, uh, I think the person didn't wanna pay the fees or something like that, and, you know, they're not suing, I don't really know why, but.
Did we, did we finally clean up our ordinance on CUPs with, um, if you recall, we had the one with the cell tower, and then if they appeal, it goes, like a.
No, you did.
Okay.
No, I tried to do that, um, so, conditional use permit law has changed, it started changing a couple of years ago, and so, uh, a lot of things happened with that, uh, it definitely became a due process issue now. Some people had questioned that before, now it definitely is. So then you gotta have, you don't want multiple layers of review. You have that one, you wanna have that one good review, and then you're done. And, whatever this is, uh, our ordinance says that an appeal of a CUP goes to the, uh, village board. And then you've got, you know, as we did before, you've got probably village board members on the planning commission. And they make some decisions, and then they gotta abstain because that due process issue is there. You know, how can the same person do it twice fairly? Normally, so you definitely wanna have that be the Board of Appeals instead of the village board, in my opinion, that takes care of that whole issue. Cause the Board of Appeals is generally people not on any of the other bodies. And that's the reason why it's not the same people. Okay? Uh, and I gotta tell you, a lot of people, no, we haven't changed ordinances, I know, but a lot of people started dialing back what kind of special use permits they even offer. Because they've gotten much stickier. The law's a little confusing, and I've seen decisions both ways on it. Cause it says you gotta have proof of a decision one way or the other, and so, you know, it just gets confusing, like you didn't disprove it, people are always claiming, um, as opposed to proving it, and so. A lot of, the best, best course of action long-term would be to start dialing back, probably CUPs or E R. Make it a legislative change, so you know you're still in full control. Okay? So that's, that's why they're gonna have more of a messy suit if they ever go forward, just because it is a mess than any law right now. Okay, next one. E R D claim, that's equal rights division. Uh, our former clerk filed one against the village for, uh, vacation pay. So vacation pay is part of your wages under the statute, and you have to be paid out by the next payroll period if you leave the plant. So, our employment period is like two weeks we pay everyone. So within two weeks, that had to be determined and paid out. And, when we checked the records, I don't know if this is a reactionary thing or what, but, uh, it looks like she was paid and still has the money. So I don't know where this is gonna go, I mean, we actually already responded with that response, like, our records say she's got the money, so, I don't know if she got confused or what happened there, but, um, we have not looked to that one either, that I can tell.
Yeah, that, that was a question of, of her notice, she didn't give two weeks' notice, which, I guess in, in her complaint, she says it's customary to, to pay out, you know, vacation pay. But it's also customary if, uh, we, we don't have it exactly that way, but it's, it's always been customary for two weeks' notice. And as far as I know, everyone else who, who left, you know, gave two weeks. And then that issue came up, uh, but the, the money had already been sent, which also, I think, should have come to the board before that was wrapped up. So yeah, the, the complaint is weird, you know, she got the money, she knows she has the money, and yeah, she's complaining that she didn't get the money. And it did.
So Chris tried to reverse the transaction, but that was unsuccessful?
Well, at first, oh, I, I can explain it. Yeah, no, I didn't. So yeah, so, the day the payroll was run, it wasn't the two week window, so nobody had verified even what the vacation pay should have been. So Bobby told Sarah, "This is what it is," and then cycled on the payroll. Well, I told her, "Don't do it," and so it was done, I said, "Well, then reverse it," so then that was on a Friday. By Monday, I was told it was reversed. So I didn't think anything more about it, and then got that letter, and then I talked with the attorney about it, about two weeks versus, you know, what's customary and whatever, and came to the conclusion that really you couldn't hold it. But then it just, nothing was ever said about it, and then so circle back now, then you get this letter from the E R C. Or the, oh, sorry, E R D, saying, "Hey, let everybody know," so we, you know, did so, and it turns out, when I was told it was reversed, it had to, but then it created a negative account, and so it was never, it was sent back to cover that negative.
The, the reverse of the balance.
Right.
Basically. So, I think that was because early on, well, part of, you just said one, but part of it was, people were talking about this two week requirement, and then I looked through the handbook and everything else, we don't actually have one. We don't actually have a two week requirement anywhere. And it was like ten, ten or twelve days' notice. I was, it was eleven, so, less than fourteen, but. And you're, you're not gonna be able to not pay her out because she gave eleven notice, days' notice instead of fourteen, when you don't even have a hard requirement. It's just, the apps are not gonna work.
Well, and was it two weeks, seven weeks, two, right? And it wasn't.
Business days.
Yeah, business days, it was.
But wage claims are the worst, okay? If a wage claim is made, you have to be able to disprove it. They just make the claim. And I, I had one once where I, yeah, we lost it. This guy wrote down alleged times he worked after the fact, after he was let go. And because the records were such a mess, we couldn't find records to disprove what he was claiming then, and he got paid. So, and then you can also pay interest and penalties on wages, it's a very harsh law. You're guilty to prove an innocence, and sometimes you can't prove your innocence. So, the only thing I would ever look at is if, I don't know if it got verified, stable, uh, what the price of all was. If she was overpaid, we could ask for some back, you know, if, if she was underpaid, we better pay the rest.
But I think the notes from right.
Three months arrived after all?
Afterwards, yeah.
So basically, there's nothing to do.
I'm just wondering if it reversed and it bounced from the buzz and N S O fees? Should be titled to that?
It wasn't in the, wasn't paperwork I saw.
Was anything mentioned?
Just explaining, the, the bank had to explain what happened. And then we had some ledger pages basically showing it, so.
Yeah, everybody got it on that stuff, pretty much.
Yeah. So that's, that's it for that one, I guess. They'll have to play it out, but I don't, I don't see how much they have in there. All right, elections, election commission complaints. I wanna just say this again, I, I think I've said it before, maybe I have, I don't remember. But clearly, um, a lot of these complaints misunderstood what the elections commission does. Okay? They are not a punishment body. They don't find anyone, you know, no one goes to jail, there's, there's no direct action like that. They're a very small state agency, there's, you know, they have a commission, which is some people around the state that are politically appointed. They have, I think, three attorneys that work there, probably a few that go to jail, and that's it. So they're not, they're not going anywhere, they're not running around anywhere. What they do under that statute where the complaints are made, is they provide a response with guidance, if any. So sometimes they don't necessarily have it. But if they have any, they, they tell you, like, "Hey, this is what the law is, this is what the facts are summarized." That's what the response was with those facts, and, you know, as applied to the law, this is what you should be doing. If it's not what you're doing now, you are ordered to do it from now on. And then if you don't do what they tell you, then it could be referred to like to disretreat yourself. So, but the guidance part is not direct punishment. So all these, you know, efforts to see a fine or something with an elections complaint, that's kinda misguided, that's not how it was working. So, uh, kinda briefly. I don't know if there will be guidance on these things or not. Um, we just, I did spend time looking at these every time, because if there's something wrong, you know, then we can do something about it, you know. You wanna do that. But everything was kinda unclear, they have a lot of guidance, but not every single question that you can think of has been answered already. So, some of them are, mostly to the negatives, I don't think, the first three complaints, I don't think they're really going anywhere. There could be some minor guidance there. Uh, the fourth one was definitely a messier situation. Uh, I, I wouldn't, to me, it wasn't clear cut either way, I could see it, I could see it both ways. So, we'll just wait for guidance on that. I mean, so you just wait. They answer them only in order they're received, so it was clearly a bumper here for complaints. It was kinda, it was fashionable to make complaints. All right, so, not just here, but definitely including here. So it'll, it'll be allowed before we get these responses back. They won't, they won't get back to us, but if they tell us to do something, we'll do it, that's it.
So it's the messier ones, all right, just to clarify.
There was just a lot more weird facts. An individual came to look at the election machine testing, but it was also absentee voting day. And so there's rules that apply to the polling place during any voting time. Did those apply to the room with the election testing going on? That's not exactly the same thing, I, I see what the point is there, but the polling place is the village hall at the same time. So, is there a room in the village hall that's not part of the polling place?
Yeah, it's right.
I've never seen that.
The judge's chamber is why they did, it's a separate room.
Yeah, I don't worry about the facts are, but the polling place is the village hall. So, I, I don't know what to tell you, that's an unanswered question anywhere, and, yeah, they'll probably tell us which way it goes, there's a couple other things that I'm, I'm blanking on right now, there was, uh, several different facts there, but that was the main crux of it. Which one do you consider it to be? And, yeah, we'll let WAC decide that and let us know, and then do what they tell us.
Okay, so it's, it basically, just instructive to straighten people out. Uh, I noticed when the board was named, uh, or some of the board members were named, we had a response for the clerk, but not for the board members. Why was that?
Well, the clerk made the main response, I, I put in, I think a supplemental letter for that. Supposed to be bent on behalf of the village, but, I don't know.
Okay, and the other question is.
Well, I'll finish. Let me finish, Ken.
Okay.
I have one, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, what I just explained to you about how nobody's getting fined directly, so if, if you name someone who's not an election official, that's the point. The board members were not election officials, at least in that scenario. There are some scenarios where an elected official could be also an election official. And that may happen in small places generally, maybe, uh, the officials are helping conduct a caucus, you know, if they use that method for nominations, so maybe, maybe in that moment, you're an election official, as an elected official. But, you know, we use nomination papers, it's, I didn't think any, any crossover was present here, so, uh, you know, no. We're gonna get guidance, whether those board members were named or not, it didn't really change anything. But they clearly weren't election officials in my mind, and maybe they didn't clarify that. Cause there was, there was information on that, they, they had found maybe in three occasions that there was crossover, but it was all, I get why, like I just explained in that example, and none of that stuff was present. So, that's.
Okay, so the other, the last question I have then, is, is, is this, if, if this is just guidance, and there's no fines or jail or any of that stuff, why do we spend so much time and, and money on legal charges for, for these wet complaints? Why, why not just have her, it, it give her answer back, you know, of, of what she was thinking? And, and then leave it at that? But I, I, I think we must have probably a couple thousand bucks per complaint, you know, into, into a legal offense for this, when the penalty is not that big.
I think two, I think I might have to work on a lot, and the other two not very much, the one was quite small. Well, typical fashion here at the village, nobody has any experience, they don't know what was going on before. And they barely know what they're doing now, cause they've only had so much training and so many elections to do. So, frankly, our staff, I mean, they weren't able to be very helpful. I had to piece it together on my own by getting the, the records and discussions and everything else to see what we were even doing, how it came about, and if it was actually clearly wrong or not. So, yeah, I didn't have to do all that, figure out, you know, which, just the situation we've had here at the turnover, uh, that's the situations we were in. And then also, like I said, anything that's out there is just fell in a gap, you know, and it's hard to prove a native. So, that's how it went. I've been, I've worked on, I've been working on election law this whole time, I've been doing this for a while. And, I am, I am familiar with it, it's only changed somewhat, but it's so unique in its application, it's, it's more, it's more complex than you think, and this is why WAC got in trouble in the last couple of years. It's cause they were giving so much advice that just wasn't even kinda fitting the statutes. I mean, I, I had a beef with that even. And so I, I get what that's about, now they kinda dial back where they're trying to not give strong advice where there's not a clear statute, so that's why I have no idea what we're gonna get back here. From WAC, they might, you know, they might pump on some of this stuff, that wouldn't surprise me either right now.
I mean, I think some of those, right, I mean, cause we're, just to clarify for everybody listening or in the room, we're talking about the complaint filed by Dave Baker against our former clerk and, right, trustees, Ayden, me, and Coyle. You know, I, I know the opinion was, that was a, basically a frivolous complaint using the wrong part of a statute, right, because we're not election officials, right, this is about appointing Bobby to be the clerk, right, was that complaint? Is this the one we're talking about?
No, well, there's four, there's four. Okay, so this was the second one. There was no purpose in naming board members, cause they're not election officials. All right? The nature of that complaint was similar to the first one, trying to contest the number of poll workers we have. And there is like five different statutes actually involved, and people were just looking at the first one. And so there's modifiers, and there's options you can exercise as a village, and, um, what we were doing here as a village, it, it's pretty commonplace as far as I can tell. Those complaints actually mirrored complaints made in other communities, uh, trying to go after the same thing, so they weren't original ideas. Like I said, there was a lot more complaints, I think, this year, I think they're very overwhelming over there in WAC.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand that was the, the one, cause, I mean, to me, I mean, with those types of complaints, wondering why the attorney would be involved, right, you've mentioned the five different statutes, I mean, right, this job isn't, you know, elected officials, we're not. I mean, right, this job isn't, you know, elected officials, we're not election officials, right? I mean, we're not trained to run an election. I, I think it's very valid if people are going to file those types of complaints, that we should have some sort of defense, right? And this isn't a time job.
Oh, of course. When I asked, well, more importantly, you know, I asked the board members or tried to ask them all, uh, who were named, um, do you have any facts? Do you even have any facts? And, no, you should open pass an ordinance on it or something. You know, were you running the election? No, you don't run the election. That's why you're not election officials, right? You're not actually participating in conducting the election. And, you know, there is kind of a overall rule with election administration at the local level, and it's basically what the clerk is doing. And, you know, that's one of the ways that this might get punted, is they just say, well, you know, it's a clerk's duty and a statute that they're running, running the election. So they make, they're going to have to make choices during the time they do that. So yeah, we'll just wait and see. But I just wanted everyone to understand, because clearly these complainants do not really understand the nature of this. It's for guidance. Okay? And, you know, we took them seriously when they came in. If there, you know, if there's some, you know, if there's something wrong, we better look into it, right? And I don't, because it's going to be months yet, probably, before we get, many months probably, before we can all be back. And if something's really wrong, you're going to wait a couple more elections or something? You know, because we have yearly elections here, primaries, there's a lot of elections.
So I guess I got one more question. My complaint, for example, was, was to correct certain practices that I had been trying to kind of, uh, explain to her for months. Now, say after that complaint came in, or, or any of the other ones, that you sit down with the clerk and give her your opinion that, uh, this, this complaint doesn't make sense, or it does make sense, maybe you should change some things you're doing? Did you give her any kind of your own opinion on that?
I would have if we had, if we had a clear, if we had a clear one-way, you know, situation, I absolutely would have. That's partly why I was, that's what I mean, that's why I was looking. A lot of them don't look like they've got merit, a lot of the points in those complaints, and, uh, what's left is kind of either way, no way to predict the result, so there wasn't very much advice at the end of the day I could give. I would say this, based on my experience with that, it looks like, um, most things were done correctly, even if accidentally. Which isn't the great standard. So someone, at some point, ought to look into, this is kind of what happened at the time. Someone ought to look at this and just, are we even, are we there or not? And, yeah, that's, that's kind of my colloquial summary. Uh, we were doing things correctly, but a lot of it was like accidentally. All right, referendum questions. I know, I know there's some questions about this, um, I just wanted to talk about these, this real briefly. There is, uh, it's hard to write referendum question. It can be, I've done them several times. But you have to be very, very careful with the language and, uh, structure of the sentence. There can only be one clause per question. And this does get sort of, and I, I, I forget which one it was, but I remember years ago, there was a statewide referendum question that went to court and got thrown out because it had two clauses. And they just somehow didn't notice till after the voting. That would have been, you know, a tip-top entity that tried to get that done. So it is important to write them well, and that, I wouldn't expect, you know, someone who's never done it to be able to do that off the bat. Now, I did have a suggestion though, because it's hard to know how to start it, right? I did have a suggestion. I was thinking about this. We were talking before about advisory referendums, which part of the, uh, shared revenue law change they did took away a lot of the authority used at advisory referendums. The only one stated for capital cost now. And advisory means, doesn't mean anything. Okay, I mean, no, that's the wrong way to put it. It doesn't itself do anything, right? Because now you've been advised and it's up to you to do it or not still. And that might vary depending on just how strong the vote is, you know, if it's barely one way or the other, maybe you're not motivated to do something, you know? Uh, the other type though is, there is a levy limit referendum question. So that's when you try to exceed the levy limit of the municipality. In a village, you have to have a board resolution that says, let's put that to the referendum. And this is in sixty-six point zero six zero two sub four. They actually have suggestive language in the statute for that one. And that one is not limited to capital costs. And when I see these, people are putting things in there like, you know, do you, should we raise the levy by X amount to be this amount now? For the purposes of, and I've seen hiring three new patrol officers, buying two new cars, and, you know, someone else getting a cane on you. Okay, they just list everything they're trying to do. So that'd be a lot more comprehensive referendum question, and it's connected to the levy. And you can't get people take it more seriously than deciding whether their levy should go on by that amount. And that's kind of, I mean, really, that's how you should be looking at paying for it if you're going to do it anyway. And not just debt for debt's sake, you know, you tend to look at actually funding it with the levy and, you know, for some people to lower the pay.
No, I just want to clarify, we did consider that, but with the, because this, we're, we're talking about the ambulance referendum. The problem is the ambulance proposal wouldn't have increased the levy. So that's why we're going to go that way, right? The, the ambulance, right, as the financial analysis showed, was not, it was the opposite. Yeah, you'd add some debt, but because it was offsetting, you know, some of the general fund levy, like the, the NAP was actually a reduction in the levy, so you'd have to package it with something else that would increase the levy. And I think that was, part of that's been hard to explain to people is that the ambulance was not increasing the levy. That was, that was the point of doing it, it was reducing the levy.
Okay, I didn't read the analysis.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I get it. It sounds counterintuitive, but, it's that idea of capital versus operating costs and that.
Well, even if you really want to do an advisory referendum, you can look to that sample language in that statute. And then you can, then a committee can probably write that closely itself.
So I guess that's what I've been wondering, like, as you said, with these referendums, you can package it with other stuff. And so, for example, um, I mean, there's a lot of complexities just with our finances that, I mean, I don't know if a lot of people have been paying attention close, but we do have wiggle room on our levy limit. I don't know, that was kind of what we left off with the budget meeting, that we have not spent to our levy limit. But, so you're saying we can package like all kinds of stuff with it, like we could, if we wanted to do road repair with it and, let's say, get a detective for the police department and do the ambulance service. We probably have to do all those things combined to actually
If it's the reason to. Yeah, if it's the reason to raise a levy.
So you can just, so you can't, you basically have to do a big omnibus bill, a referendum to actually do that. But I would agree, that would be simpler than what we were arguing about, because that was such a chain.
It's more informative and more plainly putting out there what you actually mean. So you can still do an advisory, it's just that it's a partial, right? Doesn't cover those other things. So, I don't know, I just wanted to bring that to attention, especially because you got language in there that can help you write it, you know, either way. I mean, you could use that thing as a basis for advisory one too, you know, and then maybe I just look at it at the end or something. That, that wouldn't cost much at all.
Doesn't the referendum question have to be somewhat clear? I mean, you,
Very clear.
If you've got all these different aspects to it, it's too confusing. And if you want, how are you going to raise the levy for roads, but then throw in the ambulance thing, which Alex claims is not going to need any increased levy? Their whole point is that this ambulance service will be cash positive. So why would that be thrown in with a levy increase referendum?
Well, then, operating cost positive, right? Not, not money maker overall, but on a cash flow basis, yeah, it's positive, if that makes sense. But it would reduce the levy because they're trading, so you capitalize something. Okay, look at, like, you're getting rid of operating costs, that's why I would lower the levy.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't recommend, I think it'd be a bad idea to throw everything under the sun in one levy referendum question, because it, it just, it'd be too hard. The ones I see are more focused, like the example I gave, like this one addition of service or this issue, you know, more limited and it's easier to understand. No, I just wanted to bring those options to your attention. So.
There's no other way to ask. Cause even, I think all of us would love to be able to just ask, should Corona start?
Lee, you said we could do it as an advisory.
You still can, but you only can list capital costs in the question.
Right, and that's why it's.
And so it's, it is confusing. That would be a question for like, should we have a new village hall? Just an example, not arguing for it. Okay? You gotta have a referendum question submitted to the county clerks at least seventy days prior to an election. Seventy days, so you've got to do it early if you're going to do anything or try to do anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what the committee came up with, with the timelines and the change with twenty twenty-three Act twelve, as well as the difficult details or nuances of how to phrase that question. You know, it's not super common to happen. You mentioned it's not easy to just do it out of the blue. We didn't feel we could actually accomplish that.
No.
Due time for this April, that's why we didn't do it, especially without being authorized to have attorney guidance on drafting that question to be in compliance.
Well, the last one I did, uh, it was simpler than that. And I was, I was telling the municipal officials, I was like, oh, you can do it. It's easy. They called me back twice, you know, like, no, we need you to do it. And I was like, oh, and then when I actually sat down and did it, I mean, it took me a little while. I was like, oh man, it's not easy. I guess I hadn't done it in a while. And then I sent it to the county clerks and they didn't know how to handle it either, and I had to go walk it through with them on how it should be on the ballot and everything. So, yeah, it's not easy at all. I, I, I got a good reminder of that just this last time. So, so I feel for you. You're going to want someone to look at it if you do it.
But to be clear, Alex, in November, I said there was a levy for attorney. I say, check back in December and then have them back.
I don't, I don't want to call that statement, check back in December.
That was at whatever meeting we were talking about that.
I think it was.
Well, December, yes.
It was a board meeting. We were talking about how we're going to pay for it when we have the money, and I said, well, December is a different month.
Well, for you, because what was brought up is that there were like eighty dollars left in the attorney fund. And then it would have to, but, okay, so then we had a budget amendment. Yeah, we needed a budget, yeah, we had a budget amendment that didn't pass until the meeting after the APC meeting in December, right?
We only had one meeting in December.
Right, so the APC meeting was after that meeting, and the ambulance committee meeting was after that meeting. Now, now it's, now it's January, but seventy days in advance, we would have, I think we determined we needed that like, well, I mean, we already had it opened up basically. I don't know how that would work.
Okay, this, this year is different than last year because we don't have the contingency fund to keep making budget amendments from. We, we have a, a legal front line item that we have. Mr. Troney has already mentioned the statute to give you guidance. You can figure out your, your referendum question, try to get it ninety percent done, and then we'll take a look at it. Rather than have him involved in the whole thing. I think that's what he just said a couple minutes ago.
Yep, that's exactly what I meant. And then you need to help get another ballot properly too, but that's not a lot. Couple emails I got there.
Well, again, like I said, it wasn't, there was no way that was going to be getting done for this April's ballot. I mean, because we wouldn't be able to have an ambulance committee meeting until.
Well, we didn't even agree it needed to be done at the board level.
Never had the outside opinion. Well, we can, we can discuss some of that piece when we get to the ambulance subcommittee item, but, uh, I can't, you know, go all day. People want to do a referendum, but then you don't want to do a referendum. Does it, I mean, I mean, what's to speak there, right? I mean.
You want, you want to do the question right, because you don't want to go through all this, have a result, and then start to have someone argue about the process because they didn't like the result. You just want to avoid that whole scenario. And it doesn't take much to advance to avoid it. Okay, so yes, I just told you how we could do it for that much.
Exactly, but that's what I was saying, it wouldn't be possible by this April. So the committee decided.
Yeah, not contested then. All right, last one. I'm, I'm, I'm going to speak to some of these things later in the agenda too, I know, but for this report. Uh, the status of that public records lawsuit against the village that trustee Cherneski filed. The case is almost done, but not playing. So, three of the four defendants were dismissed, for me and. So Kim Manley was dismissed, I was dismissed earlier on, and Bobby, the former clerk, was dismissed. So the village being the actual authority was not dismissed, because they're the actual, they're the correct party, okay? And let me make sure why you understand, I'm pretty sure this is why. Why is the village the authority that could get in trouble or pay a fine or something like that? It's because the village board, it, it's your guys' job to make sure we're doing public records correctly. So that means people that have training, people that have resources, people that have, you know, stuff in place where we can try and get this done, and we've been, we did work on that a bunch. Um, the person I mostly worked on it with is gone now, of course. So a big part of it though is changing that ordinance. So that stuff we already took care of at that previous meeting was all good, necessary, and I'm glad that stuff's done. It'll be helpful going forward. Because what happened here was, the one, the one complaint found by the judge was that someone, well, Ken emailed one of the staff people, it was our treasurer at the time, we got going. And this would have been not even six months into her tenure, never worked at the village before. You know, did she send a toe-to-toe records response? No. Okay, but you're talking about a new person who's never worked at a village before, and I'm sure she didn't even know what a records request was. Okay? So that was the one fault that was found by the judge. Also that our public records policy isn't that great. I actually had that on, no, actually I had that on as number ten. That was, that records policy should be reviewed. It's, it's pretty brief. It was, it's not exactly correct, okay? It's, it's better than none at all, but it's not exactly correct, so I would, I would look at that. Maybe, maybe Jen, maybe you can even start by looking at it. I think the office hour might be wrong on it, you know, there's just a couple things like that. So just, just review that. So, yeah, we did not have that records. So, yeah, we did not have that records policy up in the lobby. You're required to have one prominently displayed somewhere. To be honest, though, there's a so, okay. So the insurance defense counsel that we had basically pled guilty on behalf of the village. Okay, so there was not a records policy though. So that's kind of a dinghy right there. And that one violation was wrong. So she basically pled guilty. Now, why did they do that? The insurance defense counsel, they have different motivations than otherwise, okay? Their main motivation is to save the insurance company money. So they're gonna do things with as little work as possible if they can. It's a low fine. It was a hundred dollars. And the judge gave that one hundred dollars because under the statute, that's the minimum that he has to provide if he finds a penalty. So that one hundred dollar fine was ordered to trustee Charneski against the village. So that's why we fixed that ordinance, because that was the main, one of the main reasons that it happened was that under that ordinance, we had eight or eight, nine, ten records custodians that you could send them to, send a request to all these people. That's exactly what was going on. So we, we funneled that down in the ordinance to the office of the clerk. So we can keep track of these things better. We can concentrate the training in a few people. Because we're gonna continue to have turnover, obviously. We're, we're gonna, again, right now. So, and there were no, there were no formal responses being given when I started here. There were just kind of these emails shooting back and forth. That's kind of was the process at first, which is not legit. You gotta have a formal response that's real clear. You gotta make a statement if you withhold anything that, you know, here's what you can do about it. And so we just did not have, I tried to make templates and stuff that we could use. I did not see nor near all of the requests that come in, but we at least tried to get materials for that reason. So we had some templates to try to use. So that helped, I think some. But you have to have those formal responses to a request. You have to. And I was, um, I was humbled. Maybe ten years ago or something like that. This reporter asked this small town for some records and that person didn't really know what they're doing. And so I said, I'll handle it. And I had a bunch of emails back and forth with this reporter. And it all seemed very nice and pleasant. And I was like, is this it? You know, you got everything? Mean anything else? No problem. You know what I mean? And, oh, no, no, everything's fine. And then what even happened a short while later, there's a newspaper article that was actually, you know, ripping on everyone who didn't provide a perfect response. And, and I got to be in that because I didn't provide that super formal response. I thought the guy was doing it all buddy-like and he was. But it was really just to bait me into being lax so I could be the bait. Okay, so you, you just, that was it. That was the last not formal response I ever did, okay? So you gotta be careful about that. And we've tried to improve those processes here. We got more work to do, I've no doubt about it, because we gotta do more training again. But at least we can train like one or two people primarily instead of like trying to train eight people, which is nearly impossible.
Do you really template up the one in your own?
Which template?
For the responsive or for the public record request?
I don't know, maybe Jen can find them in there. I mean.
There is canned response, right, Jen? There is?
There's a couple. There was a couple I made, because there's different situations. Here's your record. Here's, here's some records, but I had to withhold something. Here's, you know, here's no records because they're all withheld. But you gotta have a basis specific for withholding anything, and that has to be mentioned because that's what you get sued on. So if you, if you got a response that doesn't have that analysis or, you know, some reason in there, then you didn't do it right, you know, okay? And the ones that are most complex are, uh, every once in a while, help the police chief with one. Because those get pretty hairy. And there's a lot of, uh, delving situations that can be in a police file or a report and those are tough, those are, those are the toughest ones. Okay, most aren't that hard. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have to see most, you know. But yeah, some of them are.
And you said that we were, we were fined a hundred dollars?
Well, plus the filing fee probably.
Yeah. So where does the fine get paid? Who gets that?
Well, the case isn't fully over yet.
Where about, who would get that fine?
Lee, do you know that the court did, um, make their decision on that?
Yeah, they ordered it.
On the twenty-third. And what, Kelly, what this is, is, uh, part of the transcript, the judge said, "With respect to that claim and its finding a violation of the open records law, the court concludes that Mr. Charneski is a prevailing party and the court will award taxable costs, damages in the amount of one hundred dollars." So the costs, filing fees, copies, and, you know, maybe possibly a couple hundred bucks. And then I, for my thousand hours of work, you know, get the easiest hundred bucks I ever made, I guess. Uh, but that's, that's defined by statute. That's the minimum.
So you received that as citizen Charneski or trustee Charneski? Because trustee Charneski should never receive any such thing because you're taking money from the village.
He, he stated that his opinion was that I filed this in my private capacity, so that's how he was treating it. And there were, I had like a minimal, no less than eight claims. But because I did this myself, first time I ever did it, um, I, I failed a lot on presenting evidence and all that. So there was one request that apparently was worded acceptably or something. So he, he awarded me for that, for one request that, um, but when I filed the complaint, the insurance attorneys, they decided just hand them all over. That, that there was not a, a good case to, to try to withhold these invoices. And then the judge said, "The village, although I think it carried out an unreasonable interpretation of our open records law when it failed to release a redacted version of the invoice, was relying on the advice of counsel." The court has also considered that that, in that regard, that the village, I think, likely the advice of other legal counsel in connection with this litigation ultimately released the requested record. Uh, they didn't fight tooth and nail until today to provide that record. So he's saying that, uh, the village was unreasonable in not giving these, um, attorney invoices. And, but the village really isn't held responsible because they're taking the lawyer's advice. And the other lawyers, the defense lawyers, um, had a different opinion. So they just, they didn't argue. They just handed it over.
Well, I guess I hold the same position that I did a year ago. And that is, the moment you sue the village and are asking for damages, you should have left the order. And now you've received the damages, even if you spend more than what you're awarded in damages, you are no longer representing in an equitable fashion the village. You're representing yourself. That has been the argument I, I had for a year on this. So for what it's worth, you.
My, my position is that.
Can I go first?
Yeah.
All right. That was a partial reading of the decision. Um, there's more to it than that. Prominently that the court ruled that trustee Charneski was never harmed. Okay, but it was a technical violation and the statute says he has to award a hundred dollars. So that's what the judge did. That's the law. I never saw this communication that was a violation. I never knew it even occurred. I saw it for the first time when the lawsuit was filed. And, you know, in part, we have, on the Sean Dumez point earlier in the session, you know, we have this tradition of just not even asking an attorney. Because you think it saves a buck in the short term. And, which is what it is. That same thing with the referendum question we just discussed. These elections complaints, I was never once asked what we were doing for elections before we got complaints from them. I had no idea what happened. You know, I was kind of been the new guy too. And I'm not trying to blame a former staff person. We've had so much turnover here. We've had mostly more history. And I've sat here for four thus far. But it's been a mess. And then it kind of just fell apart again with all those resignations. So hopefully get it put back together again. I was working on these processes.
You say you have over twenty years of experience in this whole law?
Almost forty. So.
Have you ever seen a trustee sue a village in any other place besides here?
Joel Strad?
Who's a former, was he?
That was here, I guess, though. No, no. And the real issue is that the goal of the law is to get a record if you're not getting it. And he got the record. So normally, the lawsuits end there. So you just give the records and plead guilty. That is the actual strategy. That's not novel to this case. That's typically what insurance defense does for these cases. So I know that. And I said it was almost over. There's one hearing remaining, and it's a sanctions hearing against trustee Charneski to see if he should pay a fine for bringing this case and keeping it and for how he conducted himself during the case. So it could be a much more expensive one hundred dollars. And that's on top of one hundred dollars and fifty-five cents that he already had to pay me for wrongfully suing me. Okay, so is this, it's a mess that should have been avoided. I think that, that's my takeaway. This is just another huge mess that should have been avoided. We can do that. There's, we already did some of it. That's why we changed that ordinance already, okay? And I, I think we had another step or two that I'm forgetting right now because that was months ago. But we're ahead of the game on improving things. We've still got a lot to do. Jen should not find an old response and just mail it off. And oh, that our former clerk did that much, you know. A template is something to start with, kind of like designing this question. Because if you don't have the exact right basis listed, you know, you can't just copy and paste some statute you used to respond to a different request. It may not be the applicable standard. So there is some individuality to them. Our police clerk, Diane Drew, was pretty good at these. The chief here is pretty good at these. So we have some skill and experience in that, but, uh, we're starting over with the clerks again for the most part, so please beware of that.
And I think this whole conversation's a perfect example. And I know I sent out an email like that. You know, basically about being correct and right, you know. I mean, we spent all this time and money and consternation and nastiness. What would be accomplished? I mean, Ken got to go say that, oh, he was wrong with the public records request. When, you know, maybe we could have, you know, worked collaboratively, collaboratively with staff at the get-go. Continue to request it instead of not getting what you want and immediately filing suit. I mean, it's stuff like that. Why, why this board is paralyzed? I mean, it's like, frankly, the village is on fire and we're fighting over basically frivolous crap like this. We don't have a finance director. We haven't had an administrator in years. With all this turnover, um, we've been unable to really think outside of the box to try to fix some of our finances. Can't move forward on, uh, a lot of our difficult issues. I mean, our, our parks are kind of pretty sad. Our road infrastructure's falling apart. Our, um, I mean, people are scared to speak up at times. I mean, I mean, where, where is the dialogue? Where's the idea that staff and the board should be on the same team?
Alex, you were here, you were here when we did that. On September twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-three, we had this whole agenda item about the attorney invoices. And I, I quoted the law on it and Mr. Troney gave his answer. And we went through the whole thing. And at the end, it, it, it ended up, he said, we have a difference of opinion. And, and it moved on. And, and there was, if you recall, every time, all they said is, you can't have these. It's attorney-client privilege with, with no explanation. And this went on for several months. And, you know, I tried talking to Kim Manley. There just was nothing to it. Yeah, I mean, there was no, um, uh, no basis for it. And sort of, there was no choice. I, I got better things to do, you know, this kind of legal stuff.
I actually do wonder about that. I mean.
On, on that point, um, speaking of better things to do, I think a lot of our folks here, it's now quarter to eight.
I agree.
And we are on item, uh, four.
I knew it was gonna be a long meeting and some laundry ones and stuff.
I'm just saying the same.
If you got anything to complete.
The state government's at the center of all these issues.
So let, let me just review because there were several meetings. There was a meeting, one of the first ones that made the first one, where I heard trustee Charneski tell the board that there was no such thing as attorney-client privilege for public records. And that was an incorrect statement. The next time I came, I decided I misspoke, you know. So I asked President Ball to put it up. She's citing from the official public records guy, you know, a bunch of instances where there, of course, is attorney-client privilege that affects public records. And I thought that was the end of the beat. And then it snowballed into, what it snowballed into, um, and I had no idea. I, I thought I was just correcting someone who misspoke. And the weird session we had, it was not on the agenda. That's what he was saying was misconduct, so that he didn't get it on the agenda, but he didn't follow either one of our conflicting agenda policies to do that. That's why I think Kim Manley was sued just as revenge for that and, you know, she got dismissed.
That's speculation.
Yeah, oh my god.
I felt my tongue was not right. By the way, that one violation, the one violation did not involve the clerk. And she was sued. I never even saw that message. And I was sued. So that's why everyone got dismissed is they had nothing, you know, it's just a bizarre thing.
They got dismissed because I didn't do a good job of legally, uh, holding it. And, and one wasn't served right. So, so we're, we're getting a lot of speculation.
I can leave it there.
Personal opinion, so.
So we, we can leave it there.
I mean, it's repetitive though. You did it with the last attorney too. You didn't have, have more with us anymore. He didn't want to work with us anymore and he cited you. Because you filed numerous bar complaints on him.
He should, he should have been looking out for the interest of the village. And he wasn't.
As last kid, as hit dog.
He played by documentation.
We're not talking about that. Sued that attorney, sued this attorney, sued, you know.
And, and I guess the bottom line on this is that the, the judge said the, the village had an unreasonable interpretation of the law when they withheld these documents. And, and the reason Mr. Troney, you know, was even on there, he's, he's the one who advised the board, you know, who started it. I mean, as far as I was concerned, he, he's, he's part of the authority of the village. So, well, I mean, these things he's saying, it's, he's got a lot of that kind of stuff in his paperwork too.
Okay, just, just for my own clarification to make sure I have it right. When did he actually receive the, the copies of those invoices?
Any.
When, when, when did he receive them?
It was like the next day.
Okay.
As soon as the suit was filed, that was the first thing.
So this, this, this could have been requested to be.
He had the record.
He had, he had. It could have ended right there.
Yeah, he had the record.
Really?
Well, he just, he just needed.
You're losing, you're losing the ball. You're losing, you're losing the ball.
All right.
The documents are available for you, Kelsey. You can read them.
Anything else there? Yeah, but we'll leave it there. All right. We'll run into item F. Old Business Item Five F, Increase of Committee Member Compensation. So this has been kicked around a number of times and brought back again for review to the village board.
Well, as far as, I, I think I mentioned this before. And, uh, well, this came to the board before. And, and we, we delayed action to decide, to see how the budget went and, and all that. And the budget didn't go too well and the, and the audit and all that. Um, so I, I would say not, not only do we not, um, not raise these rates right now, because we should set an example for accountability and, and a little bit of belt-tightening here. But, uh, I wouldn't mind seeing, uh, that we suspend the pay that this board does get uh, until we can bring, uh, refill our fifteen percent reserve fund capacity. Because that, that thing's gone. Our policy is fifteen percent. And I, I think all of us could do without the money and just set the example.
I, um, these rates were working on, you worked on in two thousand sixteen, I see?
Yes.
That's correct.
Correctly, I'm wrong again, but you choose not to take any money as a trustee, correct?
That's right.
Just to clarify, you can't suspend the pay for the elected officials. It's attached to your term of office. Uh, you can refuse to take it only by a certain time, I think, before you start the term. So all you could do is give it back minus taxes. Uh, just to be clear, you can't just suspend the payments.
Okay. And, uh, along that I brought up, I remember this being talked about either at the board or committee level that if someone declines to take that money, we still have to issue them a ten ninety-nine or W-2, even if they. Yeah. And you've been getting those W-2s, showing that income? You, what you do with the money is up regardless.
I haven't heard anything from anybody on it.
Yeah, because that's, uh, if your purpose is for not to accept it is to show that, no, you have no income, that's actually incorrect. Whether you choose to accept the money, you can donate it right back to the village if you want, but you still have to show it as earned income. So the ten ninety-nine.
That's not what the statute says, but.
We went through this. I want to spend a committee then.
I think it was.
I, I know we have this conversation. You can't just say, I accept the money.
I mean, personally, speaking of the finances of the village, I mean, frankly, I had a budget amendment. I was talking about some ideas to improve our funding prior to that budget meeting, starting off. Board did not accept any of those proposals. Um, quite frankly, I mean, some, some people might have seen my public statements just on the status of the village. I mean, the point of board pays and to get it rich, but it's to make it accessible to anyone who would want to serve the community, right? I mean, it's quite a time commitment. If you want to do the job right, um, it should be a fair amount of work. Increasing the pay still keeps it a pretty low hourly rate. But, uh, I mean, like I said, this won't impact me because I'm not running this year. But, uh, you know, it's only for people in their next term. I mean, I, I do think, uh, you know, it's not been raised since two thousand sixteen. I think workload and the issues we have, I know we have some financial stuff to work through, but, uh, you know, frankly, this village can work through those financial issues. It's just going to take people working together. I hope that someday people will be able to. But the board pay isn't what's causing, and the committee pay. I mean, I think we want engaged people that are willing to care about the village. Um, so, I mean, I, I would be in favor of hiking it some. You know, I think, you know, I'm not, I'm not doing it for forty-two hundred dollars a year. Like, and that's not the reason I'm on the board. But I do think for some people, especially if you're like, you know, middle class or lower middle class, um, in order to make this type of time commitment, I think there are expenses associated serving on board. Those are my two cents.
So the APC recommended the first values there, so the forty for a committee member, four hundred for a trustee, and seven hundred for the president. That was what APC had recommended originally. It wasn't noted in here, but that's what they.
Initially, I think we had this in the budget and then we took out.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that. That's probably more in line, uh, with some of the other neighboring communities. I know, uh, county board, um, we want to speak about this. I mean, people, right? People don't like elected officials giving themselves pay hikes, right? I mean, let's be honest. But, I mean, the county board, they give themselves a pay hike of what, three percent every year? That's already built in. And sure, the county board pays quite a bit more than this. And I think the county board's quite a bit less work on average for average member.
Well, we're, we're not the county. And we don't have the county's money. We're in a completely different situation. And, and you yourself just said, you're, you're not on the board for the money. I'm not on the board for the money. I don't know if anybody else is. So if it's not raised, um, I don't see where that's going to hurt anybody.
Well, you, you see the issues sometimes in other, like state legislatures and stuff. If you don't provide any pay or very, very low pay, and you basically only make it accessible for people who will never need any of the money, right? I mean, if you're someone making, let's say, twelve dollars an hour, right? Your payment shouldn't be less important than someone who might be independently wealthy or retired or, um, a student, right? I mean, it should be accessible for anyone who wants to be on the board, um, no matter what your income level is. I think. And I think having no pay basically excludes a large percentage of the population.
Well, we can't have no pay because like the lawyer said, I guess there's no mechanism for that.
Well, so I'm saying we also have this.
Plain basic inflation. And you should try to keep them low inflation. Sooner or later, you're going to get so far behind the game, I don't know.
Well, if I'm looking at this, this previous resolution correctly, it was adopted March of two thousand sixteen, was effective January of two thousand seventeen. So if that's the case, then I make a motion to increase committee pay, uh, to forty dollars per month. The trustee paid a four hundred, village president seven hundred, with an effective date of January first of two thousand twenty-six.
I second. However, can we do that? It's gotta be for the next term, right? So it has to be.
I don't know if you can make up for the next year budget.
You'd have to make it effective for the next term.
Yeah, it doesn't take effect for elected officials to let them get a new term.
Right.
But, I mean, that would be the effective date, but then would just the mechanism would be the next election after that date? So if you're elected. Yeah, April twenty-six would be the first people affected. April twenty-seven, which is this year's class, would be, would take effect then, right? The committees, on the other hand, they would just start January of next year.
So are you able to do that, Lee? Can you cover our budget that hasn't been developed yet? Yeah, but, I mean, you're making a commitment to.
To be the, the, you know, the, the other plan for our budget item.
Well, sometimes that issue can't. I mean, I guess the question.
The hike is below what inflation would have been on that time. It's actually half of what the CPI calculator would say. Going back to, by April twenty-seventeen. To end of two thousand twenty-four.
So, Lee, can you January first to twenty-six for committee pay and April twenty-six for board and the president pay?
So the next election is when that will take effect for those elected officials, but the committee members are citizens. You can increase their pay as soon as you want.
But then you're gonna do a budget amendment, right? It's not even.
That's why I said, what you said, we're twenty-six. You're right. It wouldn't affect this year's budget at all.
So you, so you're saying change them all January first?
January first, two thousand twenty-six. So the only thing that would change on January first is the committee, citizen committee members. The first wave of any trustees would be following the election of April of twenty-six. And then the next wave would take effect after the election of April of twenty-seven.
Just my opinion on this. I think we should take this until the budget of this for next year. Because otherwise we'd have to make budget amendments and if, you know, how do I say, it's such, such a long time that this would take effect. We should already put it in our budget for next year.
Right. That's what, that's the reason I made the motion the way I did.
But I know what we're making this now, you know?
Yeah, it would be the twenty-sixth or so.
You have to.
Yeah, there's no budget. Nothing would happen in two thousand twenty-five.
Right. But I'm saying we should, we should save this till we actually do the budget because, I mean, this is only January. We don't do a budget till like October. September, October.
But then that won't be able to take effect for anybody until you see what.
But if we don't, if we put it in the budget and we can pass it, then we could have it effective the following year.
No, because not everyone's pay can change with it. Only people entering a new term. You can't change anyone's pay in their current.
But, but in the end, we could though, though, like twenty-six, correct?
Only for those board members that would be us for election in April of twenty-six, if you wait until October. It's, it's confusing, I know, but it's a way of basically barring elected officials from getting into office and then.
That's such a good example, right?
Yeah.
No one sitting here right now is automatically, would automatically benefit from it.
Right.
But next year's.
Sure.
That's the, that's the problem. Any other discussion? So there's a motion in a second to approve a decrease of forty dollars for a committee, four hundred dollars for a trustee, and seven hundred for the president. That would be effective January twenty-sixth. And then the trust, the elected officials would follow suit and we can bring it over to the motion again. Any other discussion? Harry, now that's all rolled in.
Chris Cole?
Yes.
Chris Iden?
Yes.
Kent Trunsky?
No.
Kelly Coyle?
Yes.
Alex Bebe?
Yes.
Aaron Mishka?
Yes.
Craig Mortensen?
Yes.
All right, motion carried. Six to one. All right, we went on five G. We're all on duties of the village president during the absence of the administrator. So at the July twenty-second meeting, we didn't have an administrator stand the board, pointing me at the duties of administrator. That's not why I, I wrote this. So I'm not sure what I would call myself when I'm talking about administering these duties, if I'm not the interim administrator.
Well, the, the only administrative duties that I understood we were even talking about, if, I'm glad they put that transcript in the packet because that shows that, um, the only duty was to make a emergency decision if, if one ever came up. Uh, it was never even discussed to deal with day-to-day issues or, or anything like that. So that's why I am here.
It was quite.
I'm asking what, what makes, you know, going by the transcript, it doesn't even say interim administrator or anything like that. It's just the point, they're using the term appointment for emergency situations.
Well, the motion says right in to allow departments to operate normally as they would within ordinance, legislative rules, items that fall under that area of administrator from the village. So it's allow the departments to maintain their roles as they are and not interfere with those, which happens. And to basically do everything else that's in ordinance one fifteen. So if you're not allowed me calling myself the interim administrator, that's fine. Then what term?
Well, it's, it's.
Any term, no term, village president?
Well, I guess, uh, maybe some of you other guys pipe up. I, I did not get the impression you're going to be performing any of these duties except the emergency call. Uh, just, I mean, if you look through this, uh, you get, uh, apparently Mr. Troney was there. Uh, he says, uh, okay, this is something that has given some heartburn six months ago. Let's say the president gets faced with an issue that he can't call a special board meeting in time. And he needs to save taxpayers' money to get a bill sent out on time. Okay. I just want to be clear, he says. Uh, if he has time, but if he doesn't have time, you know, this is what, this is exactly what we're talking about. If you don't have time to bring it to the board, and you have to make a call, just like with this recent furnace thing. And the whole discussion, even, even Coyle's, uh, uh, motion, um, you know, he's, he's talking about special situations.
I just want to point, point out that President Ball, uh, has been acting in that role, whether we want to call it special situation or emergency situation. But you've been here, I believe, at least one day a week in the office. You have, you have been, and doing it with, you're not getting any compensation for, for that.
Zero.
So if he deigned to refer to himself as the interim administrator, so be it. I, I really don't have a problem with it because he has been reaching out to find us, uh, an interim finance director. He's been dealing with the staff issues, been dealing with, so you know what, if that, so be it. I don't even know why we're discussing this, to be honest with you, because, okay, should he have not put that in the, in the letter to the editor? Sure, I'll give you that much. But in the grand scheme, I honestly don't give a damn. Keep doing what you're doing until we can get staff back up. I, I really don't understand why we've been discussing this right now.
Because that's not the position of the president and that's not what the board approved. And if you're going to do, you know, administrative stuff, you should be calling, that's why we got qualifications for administrators, so they don't mess things up. And we handle our state issues.
Meantime, we don't do anything.
Well, well, what we agreed to at the time was each department took care of their own department.
Well, I think, I think maybe we should have shut down. Maybe we should have shut down the village, not have anyone, we have everyone just kind of go do their own thing. Then maybe, uh, you know?
Because your argument.
They'll have a little utopia, you know? No government utopia.
Your argument is made out from a July twenty-second meeting. What's happened since July? Um, well, we lost village clerk. We lost the finance director. So I, I just, I, I, I don't see the point of overacting this. Basically, we're in a keep-running mode to the best of our. Basically, we're in a keep-running mode to the best of our ability right now.
Lee, I go with it?
Yeah, so, this is deja vu what had happened earlier when we were last without administrator for a long time. And then there was arguing about it afterwards of, you know, what the president was supposed to do or not do in, in that temporary role. And so, that's why I interjected here, it was more clear, so that we could avoid this exact meeting. By assigning him the duties of the administrator in the ordinance, there's ordinance directly on it and village policies, it also says. So, anything administrator assigned to those, he could potentially do, there's literally no one else to do it. And we also said the notice thing, I understood at the meeting, and that's what I read here. In an emergency situations, make sure that the full board is informed on a timely basis. Okay, that doesn't mean he doesn't have the ordinance duties and he doesn't have the policy duties. The concern was, as I understood at the time, was that if there's an emergency, you gotta tell them. And I don't, I was just, I asked President Vol, I mean, we haven't hired or fired anyone, I mean, we haven't, we aren't treading water here. So, as far as paying out the clerk, I mean, we were never going to have a meeting to decide how much she got paid out. It's whatever her pay is and as verified as accurate by now, I mean, that's just how that works. By statute, you gotta pay it out. So, it's not like we were gonna, we didn't decide that. I mean, I don't know about the first problem, but I mean, I don't, I doubt, I doubt our department head wouldn't have, gone ahead and done that if it wasn't really important. I mean, and that is part of the motion that the department heads do what they do. So, I'm not seeing anything here personally. What I understood at the time and that trustee Coyle changes motion to reflect that, I mean, that's what I understand is going on here. If, if he self-invented a title that he shouldn't, then, you know, pick whatever words you want.
It's just another perfect example of what we're trying about this.
I mean.
Instead of the fact that we don't have an administrator, we need someone giving some direction to staff. Like I said, unless you want to shut down the village, yes, which that might be actually your goal, but.
Oh, come.
Oh, my God.
You know, I just think, I mean, obviously, we need to hire a full-time administrator. Like, we, we don't have one here more than three months since I've been on the board.
Well, it's just interesting, the reaction is so, so much different. What was it, a year or so ago, we, we had Sean DeMay, I mean, he's got all kinds of education and management. He was willing to help out and get things organized for free. Well, then there was all this issues, well, he's not qualified, you know, and all this other stuff. So, he never did take advantage of that. And the president's a president, basically, anybody can be elected president, but that doesn't mean he's got qualifications to, to make administrative decisions.
Hence the term interim.
No, it's still an administrative.
What, what is your issue here? Like, what are you trying to actually even accomplish with this item?
Well, to clarify, first off, to clarify what we originally voted for. And that was, from my point of view, was that he would only make decisions, I think we repeated this about three times already, emergency decisions. That were too urgent even to bring to the board, because we all agree that at that time, the department heads take care of their own department.
Motion does say emergency situation.
We assign him the duties and the ordinance and the policies.
That's the one motion.
Those duties are not limited to emergencies if you read the ordinance and the policies. And that's what we assigned.
That's why the transcript is in, because the motion does not say emergency situations all over. It doesn't say it.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's what the discussion was. When, when Coyle made the motion and then you repeated it and said something about the ministry, step in as needed or something like that.
And, yeah, step in and administrate as needed, that's what I said.
And as needed, that's not what, that's not what Coyle's motion was. But the point is, the as needed, that's subjective and that would rationally be based on what we had just previously talked about, on the emergency situations.
That might have been fine in July, but since then, you know, we've lost two other staff members. Somebody asked me a question, I'm like, I sit there and say, well, gee whiz, is this, is this a clerk question that I, that I can't answer? And tell them just to throw up your hands and do whatever you want? Or am I gonna try to offer the best direction I can based upon all the information that I have, all my experiences as past village president? And my experiences as past trustee? So, yeah, all that stuff's gonna weigh in on a response I'm gonna give to somebody when they ask me a question.
Well, and if you're going to act, you know, as an actual administrator, then, you know, the board should be informed too. You know, the part of this was to keep the board informed of what you're doing. And that, I mean, there's been a number of times in the past six months where, where we weren't informed of stuff until months later. This, this fire department thing was two months ago, the.
Right, well, that's.
When Bobby did that retaliation complaint against, you know, Lee and the board, that was a month. And that only came up when I asked for it. We, we weren't filled in on this stuff. And in fact, all of them, this, this police thing wasn't even, like I said, it was two months, not police thing, a fire department thing, a police report. That was gone until me and I put the agenda I am on and then all of a sudden, this report comes on the agenda.
It wasn't gone.
So what?
I said it wasn't gone, I explained that to you the other day, Ken. So, when Chief and I and the attorney discussed that report, it was like two days before Thanksgiving. So, it wasn't gonna be notified, it was gonna be discussed in January, November, because it was already the end of the month. And then we only had one month in December and then we had two people quit, this was their issue, so maybe it didn't get on at December meeting to discuss it. And I wasn't here last meeting to discuss it, and that's why it's on this meeting.
It's two months, yeah, all right. And like I, I think I said in my email, we haven't heard anything on this. So, I was willing to put it on the agenda, Chris Ayden wants a second, and now our report gets bumped off.
I suppose you didn't need a report, I said that in the email.
But that doesn't override the, the policy.
There's no policy that says that.
Certainly.
The policy says.
The agenda, uh, about agenda said, the village president may remove anything from the agenda, save for those items presented by village board members, such as two trustees adding items.
Yeah, your item's on here.
What?
Your item's on here.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it is. You asked.
Our report.
You two asked for the report on the.
And now we're getting off into the weeds again, but the point is.
You brought it, the weeds, we're not getting off, we're just discussing.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go, you know.
We're gonna talk about the ambulance thing when we get there.
Yeah, so, there's two issues. Number one, the motion is clearly interpreted as we assigned the president the duties of the administrator, ordinance and policies. If that's not what you wanted him to do, then you gotta change that motion. But that's the motion that it sits.
Well, and then it's on the board, okay, fine, I mean, I don't.
Does someone want to take away those duties from the president?
I mean.
So, is there a motion on it?
I don't, I mean, someone's gotta give direction, you know, to side up this in some regard, I, I mean.
Okay, but is there a motion to make, take away the duties?
This is not intended to make him the administrator.
I don't want to be the administrator.
Well, okay, I, I accept your resignation.
I say resign.
This president, there's no motion on this.
No. That's what, that's what I've been trying to say is, the recommended action here is the board should determine a proper course of action to take to correct the current unauthorized activities. Well, I would argue there aren't any unauthorized activities based on the scope of work that he was assigned. So, therefore, I guess if I were to make a motion, given he's already been assigned the work and accepted the work, is to simply allow him to use the title of interim administrator. Because that's really the only thing missing here, he's already doing the job.
Yeah, that's the only other item, other magic words that people want to select or have, if you've got words you want to pick, you know, make a motion.
Interim administrator is, is misleading.
Who gives a crap?
I, I really, I.
We really didn't.
You said it, you said it.
We're having an argument about which verb and noun to use. That's what we're using, adjective verbs and nouns, we're arguing about the dictionary.
You know what?
Issues in the village.
Unlike you cats, and forgive me, Craig, I, I know you're retired as well, but the rest of us work full-time. Okay, and I know Chris terms on some other committees, boards, so on and so forth. So, if he's not doing everything as the filling in the role of interim administrator one hundred percent correct, I'm gonna cut him a little slack there because he has a lot of other commitments in life outside of this. But that is the option we had. We didn't want to pay for another interim administrator. We didn't want to, I believe you didn't want to pay for the search committee. So, this is where we're at. If he uses, as a matter of fact, this is actually funny. If you go back to that last board meeting, where we approved the Humane Society Agreement, in the signature block of that agreement, it has Jennifer as interim village clerk and it has him as, I believe, as interim administrator. So, I'm saying, it's not convenient to use, to allow him to use it when we need to, to sign agreements and not allow him to use it because you don't like seeing it in a paper. You can't have it both ways, you really can't.
It shouldn't have been on the paper either.
No, I think his goal is to not have someone that is a designated point person.
But I hate to.
That's exactly the term we had, was designated point person.
Well, that's called an interim administrator.
Your argument.
Is there a motion on the words?
I doubt it, I don't think this is going anywhere.
Sure, I'll make that motion. I make the motion that we bestow upon President Vol the title of interim administrator. We'll make it real simple.
Second.
I don't.
You got a motion by Kelly, second by Alex to bestow the title of interim administrator, a village president, any further discussion? Harry, any good for the role?
Chris Cole.
I'm staying.
Chris Ayden.
I'm staying.
No.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bebe.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes.
Wish for the one, the two objective. All right, thank you, everyone. I'll make sure to look up my due role. Item H, kennel permit renewal crossroads, canine rescue. Right, Pete?
There's no way? Oh, yeah, absolutely. The short answer is, I, I addressed the concerns that are raised by one of the residents in the village, mainly like the fencing, the building permit not being completed, the dog poop and the possibility of running numerous businesses. And I didn't find anything, you know, the fence is up, the building has been completed, it was inspected by Weston when Weston was doing commercial inspections for us. I didn't count dog poop. And I don't have any evidence to show that there are running through business. He did admit that he does paw the neighbor's driveway once in a while. So, I took care of those things. Why did he have some concerns though regarding just the history of this thing? I mean, he's been renewing his kennel permit pretty regularly. This issue with the cup, I don't think he's been renewing it, but it's kind of tricky because the letters, when he gets a cup approval, says, you know, it has to be renewed by May eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, and that's when they approved two thousand twenty cup. But if I look at some other cups that were required for fancier license or kennel license, it doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason of when they require the renewal. This is something we are working on with the planning commission to come up with some kind of basis for what types of permits need renewals, for what type of cups need renewals. He needs a wash because every kind of permit needs renewal, and that has been by, by. Then also, if you look at some of the permits that were issued to him in two thousand nineteen, more in two thousand twenty, there was never anything circled to tell him what the recommended renewal is. So, I guess when the tide goes to the batter, and I think it would be appropriate to issue his kennel permit license. And then sometime down the road, when the planning commission has more time to look at it, come up with one rules and one cups.
Well, then I make a motion to approve the kennel permit renewal for Ross Hill's canine rescue.
Second.
A motion by Kelly, second by Alex to approve, to renew the kennel permit for Crossroads Canine Rescue, any further discussion?
Yeah, just, um, did you worry about the other pieces for renewals across the village? Just to some clarity, like where else? I mean, we have this issue elsewhere, I guess I'm confused as you mentioned, something being new, May eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, then there's a two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty permit, I mean, is this a?
It's just not because you have a conditional use permit that he had to get for a commercial animal establishment. And under commercial animal establishment, you need, he opted to get a kennel permit. So, if he's in violation any time of his kennel permit, that really is a violation of everything. You know, it shouldn't, the whole, the common denominator really is the conditional use permit as much as it is the kennel permit.
Why does he even need a conditional use permit?
Oh, because of his zoning question. You know, it's not a permitted use in RR five, it's a conditional use in RR five, that's the difference.
I guess where would it be, like, which zoning type would it not be a conditional use? Because why would a kennel not be?
Oh, in AR and then I think.
Manufacturing, maybe?
Yeah, so, what's like limited industrial or B three commercial.
Because these guys that are, don't have a cup, right?
Yep, correct, it's, they just require a site plan.
So, does that mean he also needs, so he doesn't need a renewal, conditional use permit ever, or?
Yeah, according to our records, he should have renewed it, but he, he was renewing the kennel permit instead.
Okay.
And there's, again, when I say there's no rhyme or reason, I, you know, there was this chart that I found that talks about existing cups, whether it was a fancier license, a kennel permit, a nomadic mine. And through the years, some required five-year renewal, some required no renewal, some required a ten-year renewal. Specifically with dog kennels, there's another one for fancier license that in two thousand twenty-two required a renewal and in two thousand twenty-three, a different one, they require a renewal, just a fancier license, not the cup.
So, is, just to clarify, is animal fancier kind of like, that's different than a kennel permit, right?
Yeah, it's, it's less dogs or cats.
At a certain, you gotta have a horse or a bear in an animal fancier, you just rent that out of your house, it's not really, it's not really like animal fanciers, because if you want, buy dogs and eat cats or something, as opposed to renting a kennel, right? So, that's how you get around.
Right, and this isn't, yeah, it's not really just about this, but it's like, he's got two conditional use permits and a kennel permit. And there's no date on this one, but then you don't know any other.
Because like the first, two thousand nineteen kennel permit said, you must renewify this in two thousand twenty. The two thousand twenty-one permit said, you must renewify this in two thousand twenty-one. It wasn't renewed in two thousand twenty-one, but from that date on, he was renewing his kennel permit, not the cup, which is why we're discussing with planning commission, because what's the need to renew them both? It's like double dipping. When the common denominator, the thing we're most concerned about is the kennel permit itself, that's the one that holds all the weight and has the conditions and everything on it.
But that one, you can't have it, you just got the cup, right?
Yep.
So.
Not only that, if he's in violation of his cup, regardless of whether he renews it or not, it's still a violation. It doesn't take away that all the responsibilities that were conditioned on the cup itself, which is actually equal to the kennel permit.
Yeah, and I'm just seeing this kind of as a lose-lose situation for everybody, the village owner, property.
And like we were saying before, it, we really need to look at conditional use permits and in which. because if he, on my guess, if he'd argue with me, and he'd show me to his permit that doesn't have anything circled that says what he has to renew and what.
There is, right, he's here, but like, I don't know, I mean, I know he's, here, I guess that's what I'm wondering, you know, like I said, I'm not singling anyone out, but like, right, he probably wants this liability removed. We as a village probably want to remove all the.
Any, say any ambiguity.
Right, so say, I mean, you know, let's say on your behalf, let's say I'm a new neighbor to you and I don't like the dogs for a reason. I hate dogs for a reason. I mean, I don't hate dogs, I like dogs, but, I mean, and I, I don't like it, I want to contest this conditional use permit. Oh, it's not renewed. What do you do? It's not renewed, his CUP has expired, so.
I guess that would be on me. I mean, part of my job is to make tough decisions and I would look at, you know, it doesn't, there's no consistency in it right now. I mean, since 2020 to 2023, those are the only years we actually had, except for for this issue, there's no consistency on that. There's never been anybody here to even inspect them or to see if, or send out letters that were newly required.
I mean, that's kind of what I'm wondering though, like, right, there's, there's, like with a CUP, with Lee here, I mean, this can't be the only example, but what I'm saying is, like, this can't be like the unfixable issue for everybody, right? I mean, if he's got that liability and I just moved in, let's say I, it's not just this case, but my neighbor has this hole with the CUP and I really just want to litigate it, can't you go to court if like the staff won't do it?
I follow up on it.
I follow it exactly, but, uh, you know, the paperwork's all, I would just catch up on the paperwork. Yeah, I'd have him come in whenever, just catch up on the paperwork, sorry. You can't change what happened, but you can do it correctly moving forward, so you just catch things up and.
And that's exactly right, and kind of in the holding pattern, may have come in for something that we may not require a renewal for.
Pete, does that conditional use have an expiration date on it?
Um, that's what they close the property forever. We put a renewed date on it, um, somebody can say that it's an expiration reason why it was renewed, but again, they're not maybe renewing the cup, they're renewing the kennel permit.
Look, you see my argument here?
Yep.
It's actually, it's actually a protection measure for the landowner.
Yeah, you want to get everything in order, that's, that's what I mean, you know.
I mean, I could have him come in and get a renewal. I guess I'm going back to listen to the minutes, I mean, it's like, I don't know why they would require that in a letter when it's not, it was not addressed in the permit. So when you address, when you issue a conditional use permit.
Oh, it's not on the permit?
No.
You said it had an expiration date in 2021.
That wasn't a letter, but then when you issue a permit, there's office use on it, so you're taking the application receipt, the check number, and the planning commission meeting, recommendation, prove or denial, and then there's a renewal recommendation, one, two, three, or four years, nothing, on both the 2019 and 2020 permit, this wasn't this wasn't circled, there wasn't a, it was.
I mean, that looks like a type on a letter to me. If it's not an actual requirement on the permit.
The minutes in 2019 said renewal, but I don't think it said it in 2020, which is another crack mark because he got a full-blown cup in 2019 and to 2020, it wasn't technically a renewal. I could go deep into this, but that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Well, I think the fact of the point is that when these situations pop up, like, if you can clean it up so that.
Absolutely.
This like, there isn't an opening, we've had issues with neighbor disputes in this village.
Yep.
Um, you know, anytime you can clean that up, you know, someone's going to be willing to follow our process and what they're told and do all the documentation, right? You don't want them getting set up to.
No, I agree.
Get sued or something else.
I addressed all the concerns that were mentioned in the previous meeting and then this is something I found on my own, um, but I thought we were going to be dealing with it through planning commission anyway, so I was going to make that a breaking point. It's up to you guys, I mean, you definitely deny the renewal until you got a conditional use permit, but then we'll have that argument that it didn't say it on the permit itself and it was just said in one of the letters and not the other.
But you said it was in the minutes.
I had 2018, but not 2020.
He said in the final, we're doing this, but I just think there's, um, a liability for both the landowner and the village on this that we need to clean up. Not liability, but a potential.
Was the, was the renewal requirement removed then in 2021?
No, it was only from 2020 to 2021. And then it wasn't renewed at the time, but the kennel permit was, not the cup.
Well, killer, you knew just the kennel permit and supplying with the cup permit, or see if we need to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that's something you just go to the planning commission to review, that's not a problem.
Now we get on with his license, so he isn't, you know, liable.
Which is not happening. So we have to accept an amendment to, uh, your motion to approve the kennel permit and send the issue of the conditional use permit to the planning commission to address?
Yes.
Well, we can leave that to Pete to take care of the cup.
Okay, don't we do that over?
What?
I don't know that we need the motion to do that, we just.
Yeah, we're dealing with the permit right now.
Well, cause stuff gets, stuff gets forgotten and dropped, especially if it's not mini-typed.
Well, we haven't had an add-on to the, to the agenda items, we had that at the last meeting, pile on effects, so as it states in the agenda, it's just the kennel permit, it's not the cup we're discussing. Even as a part of it, I understand that, but.
Right, I mean, he was saying that and I guess, I'm saying he's trying to fix the whole situation.
No, I've got clear direction, I mean, you can do what you want with the kennel permit, but I'll definitely have him come in and renew the cup.
Motion, I don't really care.
The motion was to approve it. You just, okay, the hangup is the moment in time, you just renew the kennel permit contingent upon him getting his, up to day cup. So I gotta be done today.
But I want the motion.
The motion was to approve. So the motion would be to approve the kennel permit contingent upon his renewing his conditional use permit.
All right. So I guess I'm amending my motion to approve the kennel permit, crossroads, canine rescue, uh, contingent upon him renewing the, the order, renewing his, uh, conditional use permit.
Second.
Well, Ken was the second.
Yeah, so you ought to be second, yeah.
I don't know why we're tacking this stuff on when we had, we had a nice, we got a nice clear, uh, agenda item with a nice clear motion and now we're tacking this other stuff on when basically that just needs Pete to wrap up whenever, whenever he get to it.
So you're withdrawing your second then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, from the amended one, yeah, I guess, because it's just adding unnecessary, you know, gunk here.
Okay.
All second.
All right, so now I, well, she has my kennel, he's second by Alex. So the motion is to kennel permit contingent on completion of the cup. Is that correct?
Well.
All right. Any other discussion? Harry not in the call room?
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Ayden.
Yes.
Kent Renesky.
Yes.
Kelly Quill.
Yes.
Alex Mibbitt.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. All right, wish carry seven zero. All right, moving on to item I, hiring a special prosecutor for municipal court. So Pete, do you want to explain to the group what the issue is with those citations? Because it was apparent from the last board meeting that everybody thinks it was just a re-roofing and a fixing of the wall.
No, well, hang, hang on, before we even get to that, why is this back after the board already made their motion on?
So the motion that you guys made was to not hire a special attorney and to drop the case.
No, no, no.
Yes, it was. It clearly was.
That was the original motion, but then if you guys remember, we said, wait, we shouldn't have both. So then we made the motion to not hire the attorney and the, uh, the issue of, of, we didn't want Diane continually looking for another attorney, so we unanimously agreed there, um, to pass the message on to her to tell Wolfgram or whoever that we, you know, uh, recommended that they just drop the whole thing. So there were, uh, there was one, one motion and then one kind of aside recommendation.
We can't drop.
Of course, it's just the vast, cool.
So you and I weren't here, Alex, so they, did you? I wasn't here either.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was here. No. You say, Craig, you say you weren't here? I was here. I said I wasn't. We didn't, we didn't close this, that's what we didn't do.
We, we as a board can't drop a court case.
Well. It's got to be closed through the court system. That's where we.
Well, right, right, we, we didn't order anything. We, we moved that we do not hire a special prosecutor and that was, that was a vote. And then we did not take a vote on the dropping it thing, but we all agreed that it should be dropped and to pass that motion, that, that recommendation on to Wolfgram because we brought up the issue of the guy with the ballots a few years ago, we did the same thing back then, when the guy was being prosecuted, and we, we thought it was not a good, good case or whatever, so we, uh, at that time, we directed Randy, I think it was Randy Pfeiffer, to go tell Wolfgram to drop it. So, I mean, it's not something the board is unable to do, to recommend it, uh, and that's what it was. I'm sure the recording will, will show that, uh, the only thing on the actual vote and motion was to not hire, um, a special prosecutor.
Sure. So, let me just clear up how this works. So this is a separation of powers issue in local government. So the municipal court is a separate branch of government and you don't directly control it. And you can't even really make a recommendation if that's how it's being termed now. I thought I heard drop the case, but it's, uh, you can't do it. So you might as well have voted to declare war in Canada, it's just not in your capacity as a village board to do it, so.
Well, we didn't vote on it.
So.
The only motion was to hire an issue.
As trustee Mortensen was saying, or alluding to, because it's in this separate branch of government, it's out of your control as a village board, okay? There are two things at work here, the first is prosecutorial discretion. The prosecutor, that role, has control over bringing this case still or not. Their decision, but only they get to make it, okay? If the board wanted to make a recommendation at some point, it would have been earlier on saying, Pete, uh, don't bother forwarding that to the prosecutor. Maybe you could have done that, you know, because Pete's our staff member, but once, it's already way past that and the case is filed, it's open, it's in court. The only other person who's going to, you know, decide to do something with that case is the judge. That's the municipal court judge's fault. So it's, it's just literally out of your hands, that, that motion was largely ineffectual. And because of that, you're still required to have a prosecutor, so you basically still have to hire a prosecutor.
So can you explain why you're not able to do it?
I had to meet with the staff several times to clarify which ordinances were applicable and some changes in state law and such, so it didn't make me a great candidate, you know, than to be prosecutor. So, and I, I just thought this was a great, I thought this was the perfect example of when you get someone outside anyway. Um, because it's not just this, but how many times have I commented on stuff Joel Straub is doing or responded to his request or whatever else? And then, you know, how was he not going to say the same things about me that he just said about Wolfgram that he didn't want to do it? So it just seemed like that's a total waste of time. Get someone outside, um, and you still got to. So nothing was dropped, nothing was dropped, even a recommendation at this point is, you know, moot.
He's having to go, right?
Well, no, the recommendation's up to the judge, but the decision to hire the outside attorney was a board decision.
Right, but I think we need.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's what we voted on. So if.
Just true that.
And according to the packet, it just says this is going to be suspended.
Yeah, we did vote on it, we just dropped it, see if it will go away.
We just said that, yeah, we didn't vote to, to drop the case, we voted to not hire attorney.
Well, there's like a clear.
So you're going to have to, you have to hire a attorney at them. I mean, you don't have a prosecutor who could even decide whether or not to bring it unless he's in the home. Okay, and there's this, this decision to bring this, because it was at one of these meetings, it was back when Leonard Ludy was here. Remember? So that, that's kind of where that decision was made to move forward on it, uh, which is quite a long time ago. And I know the individual did some rebuilding since the citations were issued, they were already issued.
Right.
Okay, and that's up to that, I mean, it was a violation, a violation went on for years. Um, partly why I didn't want to do it is, um, I don't know if you want all the backstory here. I'll, I'll save it.
Well, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of.
But anyway, I can't do it, okay? You got to hear something.
I think there's a lot here, because you have the two ordinance violations he was cited on. Then even if he did some work on the shed, he clearly did it without a building permit, right? And you need a building permit for that.
Well, I guess Alex said.
Just because he's friends with someone on the board and making the argument that he can, because he was part of the vote to try to stiff our, our prosecutor and was on board with the bar complaints that were filed against.
No, it's, it's more like he's got enemies on the board that want to persecute him after the board already voted to not hire the attorney. That's more what it's like.
The question here, based on the, the legal information, is this is far enough down the road that it's, we really can't do what we did. So therefore, I make a motion to reconsider the subject of hiring a special prosecutor for the municipal court case of Village of Cronwetter versus Joel Straub.
Well, you can't reconsider it because the reconsideration isn't on the agenda.
Okay, so this is something, we went over this, I forget what it was, it was ambulance related the first time, okay? And then there was an agenda item, I think it was also ambulance related. Uh, and I wasn't here that day and this reconsideration question got positive and no one was here to kind of explain it. Reconsideration is a term of art, okay? It's in your Robert's rules, a reconsideration motion is made at the same meeting where the motion was made earlier in the meeting. And that's why it's got to have to be someone changing their mind to bring it back and get to the same meeting. That's a motion to reconsider, okay? And this is what confused people and I'm sorry because that last one, that was, I had the word on there, because I was trying to be real clear, but that's just an item on another agenda. That's all it is.
Well, then I was at that meeting, so I'll move to reconsider the motion to not hire a special prosecutor versus.
Well, no, we're not reconsidered for meeting.
You can't reconsider, it's what you're saying, you can't reconsider.
So it's making a motion.
Just making a motion.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a new ice cream cone, so.
I just want to speak for just something quick here too, because I know at that meeting, I know I'm probably part of the fault of it, probably like, kind of what, uh, to Sean Dumez said at the beginning, I probably didn't know all the facts. And one of the things I was wondering about is, okay, he had something posed against him for the shed and. I, I just want to speak for just something quick here too, because I know at that meeting, I know I'm probably part of the fault of it, probably like, kind of what Sean Dumeza at the beginning, I probably didn't know all the facts. And one of the things I was wondering about is, okay, he had something posed against him for the shed, and he fixed it. Well, one thing I, I thought of is it needed roofing and it needs siding. Those you don't need building permits for, for one thing. So I didn't know how bad or anything, there was no information. And I didn't honestly know that it was far enough down the law where this was actually in court. So I mean, I will say that is part of my fault. I didn't know that, I was proceeding the village, and in the meantime, I've actually got an email from somebody that filed the charges, definitely, basically saying they will litigate whether the village of this does not get passed, and they threatened me personally too. So.
There's the issue of the two citations for dilapidated structure, structure, that's one thing. Since those were issued, he's now rebuilt that garage a foot from the lot line.
Okay.
Those need to be addressed.
Okay.
So it's not just ordering maintenance, repairing, some siding and roof, it's, it's a new structure, in my opinion. I've dealt with probably a dozen of these cases.
I guess it would be Leonard for not, you know, Leonard's not fully addressing everybody.
Right. I wish there, I mean, I personally.
We just discussed a discussion.
So that, at the time that, that, that meeting and that decision was made to move forward, he hadn't fixed anything, and he wasn't good. Okay? Pete gave, uh, multiple notices over a full year, and, you know, it was refused to be addressed. And that's why I moved on to citations. He got a year notice. Um, okay, this is the background. So the reason he thought he didn't, he thought he didn't have to do it and couldn't make them. And it's because, uh, when he was on the village board, he tried to rewrite the ordinances so he thought they wouldn't apply to the shed. But he didn't understand them all enough and didn't actually accomplish that. And that's partly why I was having these meetings. So you can see how deep I am in that, that I wasn't a prosecutor. But, um, you know, what happens after you get a citation issued, after years' notice and it was sitting like that for multiple years, as was explained in the facts, a tree fell on it at some point, I think it was part of it, and collapsed it. Um, so it was, you know, there was a violation now. And, you know, it's in the court's hands and the prosecutor's hands.
So this is why the whole mess with, with the building permits and the garages, why that screwed up the assessments in the village? Remember all that discussion right there?
Issues. That's got nothing to do with it.
This is unbelievable. That is a bleeding corruption.
The, the building code was changed a few years ago.
That is bleeding.
To give people a little more freedom.
Yeah, well, who pushed it?
Stop interrupting.
What's that?
Who pushed it? Who pushed that change?
Uh, Cliff.
What was trustee?
I was chairman. Um, me and Tapper were trustees. I, um, uh, I believe Ryan Lef was on it. And, uh.
We also had.
Couple other people, but it, it wasn't a big conspiracy like you're talking about. And at the time, he started repairing this building, that code was still in effect, that he didn't need a building permit to, um, to either repair it, or actually if he started building one at that time, he didn't need a permit even for that at that time, but he didn't rebuild it.
I disagree.
He took the old part. You can tell from pictures, uh.
Yeah.
It's, it's a more building.
Okay, we're, we're getting way off. This is a lot harder than Pete.
Because the lawyer gave kind of a skewed picture here. He, he didn't, uh, change the ordinances for some reason so he could sneak in the shed. It's got nothing to do with it.
I make a motion to, to hire attorney Nathan Miller of the Weld Riley Law Firm as the special prosecutor in the municipal court case, the Village of Cronewire versus Joel Straub.
Second. Gonna wish my gallows, second my air, into hire Nathan Miller from Weld Riley, the process to ask a special prosecutor to prosecute a case against the village versus Joel Straub. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just one, this, this seems to be a screwed up, um, Roberts rules things, because this effectively is a reconsideration, even if you don't call it then. And, you know, it's, if this isn't, you know, a deliberate, um, basically of abuse of our positions to go after the guy after the board already voted another way, then I don't know what is.
Ordinarily, we couldn't do that. But because of where this is at now, that ship has sailed. We have to hire the special prosecutor.
Now we don't. Now we don't.
We gotta clean it up.
It says right, right in the, in the thing that it will be suspended indefinitely. So that's it. That's what we agreed last night.
We can put that in our, if that doesn't go in the court system.
So, so you did intend to vote to not proceed with the case ever?
We voted to not hire a prosecutor.
Wait a minute. To suspend it. That way is.
That's all we're doing. I, I don't care what, what you extract from that.
This, this is why. This is why the case is in the hands of the prosecutor and the judge and the defendant, and it's out of your hands, because politics is not supposed to decide this issue at this point.
In our hands is the decision whether or not to spend this money. And we decided not to. And now, and now you're ignoring that thing and effectively doing a reconsideration.
So apparently, we get to use our position of the board to help out our friends.
Or prosecute the people you want. You can do either way.
And by leaving whatever ordinances they want. Just one last.
Okay. Just one last for me, Chris, just to be clear. Everything I said was argued by Joel Straub as why he didn't have to do anything. That it's, you know, his emails and letters, that's where I'm summarizing from.
So the, just, the answer, no, we have to hire a prosecutor?
Yeah, you have a municipal court. This is why when Hap was quitting two years ago, uh, you guys were scrambling because you couldn't have a municipal court without a prosecutor, it's required.
Yeah.
You, you decided to have a municipal court at some point, maybe it wasn't you personally. If you have one, you got a staff.
There's a difference between having a prosecutor and hiring a special prosecutor.
Well, this isn't the first time we've hired special prosecutors for cases.
Well, right, but there wasn't a controversy that there is in this one, in this case.
Motion, the second on the floor.
Yep.
Do you call a question?
Yeah.
All right, question to call, second. All right, so the motion is to approve. Call a roll, please.
Well, wait, was that a motion to call a question? Don't we have to vote on the call?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. All favor call a question, say aye.
Aye.
Oho. Motion's okay. All right, now I'll call a roll for the motion to approve the special prosecutor.
Chris Gold.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
No.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bedvik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka. Craig Hortons.
Yes. Motion carries six to one. All right, moving on to, now we finally get to new business. Item number six, J, letter invoice for Mozeney School District.
Um, I, Jeffrey might have called me a little bit with this, but as I've understood it, there were nineteen ballots that were potentially incorrect. I don't know how many actually were, but I believe there was nineteen.
Two situations.
Okay, yeah. But they were all related to Ward eleven, which is our only ward that is split between Everest and Mozeney. Okay? And then those voters were either called, emailed, sent letters, and all of those were verified correct prior to election day, correct? Okay? So, I guess, as I'm, as I read this letter, um, the Mozeney School District, what above and beyond, had called virtually every village, village resident in the Mozeney School District. Um, I know myself, my wife, each got calls, and we're Ward one, um, in the lead up to the election. While the referendum passed was supportive approximately sixty-five percent. Those nineteen ballot errors, which remind you, were all corrected prior to election day, had no effect on the outcome. The school district called many, many residents that they didn't need to call. Nineteen ballots in Ward eleven because of the split school district of nature. I am not inclined to pay them two thousand and some odd dollars because they felt the need to go above and beyond to pass the referendum, which apparently didn't need any help because it passed by eighty-sixty-five percent.
So can I, this is being, hang on, can, just so you guys know what you're looking at, this is interpreted as a notice of claim under statutes. Okay? So that, it's the standard where you vote to allow or disallow it. And it's been sitting here for this long, just because the uneven meetings lately, you know, it's on now. Um, but that's what you're looking for tonight, a vote to allow or disallow the claim. You know, if you disallow, the effect is, uh, it's, they have to sue you if they're going to within six months or its time mark. Okay, so I just wanted to set, set the table there on what you're looking at. Thank you.
I, I move to disallow the claim for twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Second. Gonna wish my out, just to see if I can, like, to disallow the claim by Mozeney School District? The amount of twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got discussion. There were two situations. The first time the ballots were messed up, they put out notices and they did all the right things. Second time, they discovered the ballot mix-up. From what I understand, the clerk just kind of blew it off, said, well, we, we fixed it. We got this person who, who got a wrong ballot and they discovered it, and we fixed it. But they weren't willing to, um, do any more than that. Now, sure, after the election, you can claim, oh, well, it, it passed by sixty-five percent, but, uh, those nineteen ballots or eleven ballots, whatever it was, wouldn't have made any difference anyway. But at the time, you don't know that. You, you don't know if the, if the referendum's gonna pass or fail by just a few votes. So, so that, and, and for them, apparently it was a more important issue because it was worth nineteen million dollars in, in new school building to them. So I, I think it was somewhat irresponsible to not follow up on this second mistake and do what the village could to either notify these people who had cast ballots. Now, I don't know if, if the clerk even gave them the names of the people who had cast these absentee ballots, so they could have only called just a few people. Or if she didn't give it to them, then what choice would they have but to, uh, basically call the people in the district?
Okay, I, I understand your dislike for our former clerk, but let's, let's share a little story of the second incident. It had nothing to do with her.
Yeah, well, she, she was the clerk who, who they don't.
And I am not, I'm not saying this in support of her. I am going to make it clear what exactly happened that day. It was how the, at the ballot table, there were these, the tiered folder or the tiered file type.
Ballot things.
Yes. The poll worker simply grabbed the wrong ballot from the wrong, uh, level of the tiered thing. That was it. It had nothing to do with the clerk. The poll worker made a mistake.
And it is everything. When they come in and, and point out they have their own ballot, then it is, it does have to do with the clerk to do what she can't to fix it.
Okay, she's gone now.
Well, okay, fine.
Let it go.
No, not let it go. It's an issue of, of fair elections. And, and you're the one hung up on personalities. It could be anybody. It could, it, it could have been Lisa or anybody who, if they made the mistake and acted in the same way, you have to consider what, what's responsible, you know, from the Mozeney's point of view and what isn't. You know, is it irrational for them to do this? It would be if, under different circumstances, but since, you know.
Every ballot.
She was not willing to do anything to try to correct this. Why else would they go through this trouble?
She called, she called Dover Spike, you called.
Yeah, I.
Great, her name is the school board.
And I told them we corrected it.
People were called, actions were taken to correct the issue. The poll worker that passed out the wrong ballot asked to be removed because he was making so many mistakes.
And I believe we pulled all those ballots that he had done, all eleven, all Ward eleven ballots that he had done and contacted those.
So I have.
It wasn't that many.
I was actually here that day that, that the fellow asked to be pulled, because they were scrambling around trying to find some major place.
But that doesn't correct or, or somehow investigate how many other ones he did. That, that's their whole point in doing this.
She just said they grabbed. We pulled all the ones.
She said they just pulled them all.
Because they're all, as he picked the ballots and they're put in the ballot box.
And for the school district to claim that they spent two thousand dollars, I, I can't believe there are a hundred, two hundred, three hundred people that live in that ward, that they needed to call the whole school district. The school only needed to call people in that ward.
Is, is that what they said? They called every single person?
Yeah, whole, yeah.
They made it, they made it clear. Several people in Ward one got calls.
We actually got a lot of calls from different wards, different people in different wards that weren't affected, and they came in and looked at their ballots.
Both incidents.
So we had issued ballots a lot.
The ward a lot. That's the part that isn't, you need to make clear, because that is the only ward that had two different ballots. So we're talking about twenty total ballots.
And since that came up.
They didn't know that at the time.
And since that came up, we've been trying to figure out how we can separate that so it doesn't happen again. Maybe make it Ward twelve, so Ward eleven is Mozeney and Ward twelve is.
That's fine. And you know, all this is fine, but you, you look at it from their point of view at that time.
Right. But even to call people that don't live in that ward doesn't make any sense. Unless they were trying to do their own polling to find out how many people voted for or against the law. Pete, you got a question?
Actually, I have a comment.
Do you come, do you come to the microphone, state your name and address?
Do I have to?
You do. It all deliver, this is one time. The court, you're that far?
I have any back issues. Thank you very much. Fay Volbaker, eight twenty-four West Nelson Road. I happen to have the spreadsheet that Mr. Dover Spike and his staff put together. Uh, I can tell you that there was a set of ballots that were sent out early mailing to two people overseas from military that were not able to vote, that were given the wrong ballot. So this occurred on more than one apparently occasion, it wasn't just those couple, by that poll worker sitting in the absentee, absentee table. It also included people that had gotten mailed ballots, which is what made Mr. Dover Spike concerned when Bobby told him it wasn't an issue, don't worry about it. He was not concerned that the referendum would pass or fail, he was more concerned with the integrity of the election. Um, and at that point, had called and talked to Ms. Trueblood, who gave him the list of names, and they went through and found only people with landline telephone numbers that they could locate and called these people. And I can tell you there were more than twenty. So I don't know exactly where this information is coming from, but it is in a spreadsheet. If you would ever choose to investigate what indeed the truth was, uh, there was a mistake made and Bobby did not take responsibility for it. And Mr. Dover Spike was upset. That's why he went forward with this.
Wait, I'm confused. What do you mean more than twenty? You're saying there were more than twenty year ballots?
There were more than twenty ballots that were sent to the, I'm gonna say the wrong school district. For example, there were some in the DC Everest School District that received Mozeney ballots for the school. There were people in the Mozeney school ballot that received DC Everest school ballots. So they in turn did not get a chance to vote for the referendum, and people in the DC Everest School District then voted for a referendum that had nothing to do with them. And yes, there were more than twenty, including the two military people who could not get a new ballot in Donegal.
Right. So, and they said he only called landlines.
Uh, the spreadsheet that I have has only landlines.
I can tell you personally that they were calling cellphones. I got a phone call on my cellphone from the school district asking, and I live in Ward one.
Well, then I would suspect maybe your phone number somehow was easily accessible, but cellphone numbers generally are not. You can't do a Google search, for example, and find Alex Bedvik's telephone. You can't do a Google search, for example, and find Alex Bedvik's telephone number.
You absolutely got it.
Well, they're difficult to find. Uh, you might have.
Yeah, we're not, we're not cellphones, that's no here.
Okay, so their point was is that they found it very difficult to find cellphone numbers, so they went with landlines. And they called the people on the list that Ms. Trueblood gave them.
Anything else?
I think that's all they know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion is still to disallow. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just one comment. You know, when you mess up, you really should um, make it right. And possibly even offer them half that price or something for their trouble or something like that. Then it just, it's a good way, you know, it's a better way to deal with people, I think.
There's pretty high cost. I mean, it would be nice to think they verified it a little bit.
Any other comments? I guess that's my only comment too, is I, I don't know how they justified that cost. Or should it have been a breakdown?
It's a, it's a requirement for the claim to be itemized. And it's just that one item of this. And you know, if they just took it upon themselves to do it, I'm not sure what the legal claim is either. But it's not a great claim as before. And that's partly what we're all arguing about. That's part of their job is to put that in the claim. Okay, that's why you don't have it.
These are, is this being done before? Ballot errors and somebody that's like being charged by.
People, lots of people will send other people bills and hope they pay them. Yes, I mean, I, I don't know. I can tell you these ballot issues happen in many other places this last election, um, which is, which does happen.
I know we're understaffed, but could we possibly just notify them if they could give us a little bit of explanation with billing?
Well, you have a limited time.
Yeah, we're November here.
To vote on allowing or disallowing the claim.
I don't know if I wanna ask for more information from them. I don't think there's proper justification on it. And they took it upon themselves to do their own thing. I mean, that wasn't in their responsibility. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't see how they were damaged. I mean, they just did it themselves. I mean, they didn't, there's no information. I don't wanna invite them to send a itemized bill to try to open up a lawsuit. I don't think.
I mean, if they, if they waited until the election was counted and found out the referendum lost by five or ten votes, don't worry, it is too late to do anything. This was a time for them to have to do something. And apparently, you know, our clerk was like, don't worry about it. But they were worried about it and they weren't basically getting, um, you know, the cooperation that they should have.
Well, but the village followed up on all that. I don't understand what cooperation they need.
Didn't follow up on the second one. The first one they did, it seems like very well, you know, the first ballot mess-up. But this was the second, uh, at least the second event if not others.
I mean, again, that's not even specifying this claim. We're taking outside information about this claim. Claim's ready.
On a, on a humorous note, I do love the fact that the letter itself is dated November fifth, actual election day. They didn't wait till it was done. They just voted up that date, so.
Any other discussion? All right, Ed Colerone.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
No.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bedik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. Motion carried, six to one. All right, moving on to item K, wage increase for part-time employees. So what this is, the part-time employees generally get the same raise that the union officials or the union staff get. And so this was one of the last wage increase discussions we had when we approved the union contracts. So as far as I understand, it's already been accounted for in the budget. But it's just the house needing to catch the part-time guys up to the same three percent increase that the rest of this union staff got.
So just to put all the pages below it or part of this page, that was a little confusing when I gone through the packet.
No, that goes.
Yeah, the, the, these packet items, agenda items, located. Item, item six K has a report, but the other ones don't. They kind of blend together and.
Yeah, it's only, six K is only that one page. The uh, the on-call contract actually is six out of them.
So, so who, who are these part-time people? Part people or little parks guys?
Uh, they're parks, they're part.
Janitor.
P W. They're all P W crew, but it's partly part-time. Some are crew, some, I think there's some snow plowing guys, maybe they come in to help, part-time snow plowing. Does that sound right, Chief? I know you gotta know a little bit about that.
Um, we got a couple in the police department, our property room custodian, maybe part-timer. Uh, we got the crossing guards, they're part-time.
So this would be all those gentlemen? You have a part-time clerk?
Yes, yes, we do.
We have a janitor, right? That's part-time.
Is he an employee?
Oh, I don't.
I think he's contracted.
Is he?
Yeah, I think so.
Greg, you know if that janitor's contractor?
I believe he is. I think he is too, so.
I, I move to um, increase part-time employee wages by three percent. With effective date of what, January first, twenty twenty-five?
Second. All right, a wish of Alex, sent by Aaron to approve a three percent rate increase for the part-time employees beginning January first, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? Here you done, uh, Paul.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bedik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. A wish carried, seven zero. Next up is the um, part-time on-call contractor twenty twenty-five. So on-call is the, um, Craig or Greg, do you wanna explain a little bit? Tell what it is.
Yeah, if I say that correctly, please correct me. Uh, for the water guys who, when they come in on the weekend, if they take a call, there's emergency mobilization, um, something's going on with water plant, that they come in and get a stipend for coming in and for hearing the phone. So just to have that phone on them so they can't leave town, they can't go parking, things like that. It's just a compensation for their time.
And there is also a guy that just has a phone. I mean, he doesn't actually come in to do any work. He just.
Right, just in case something does happen. He's the guy that comes in so we have guaranteed somebody that comes in.
So did the utility committee look at this?
ABC looked at it.
But uh, this is for water and sewers, so shouldn't the utility committee?
Yeah, I'm.
Did you? I, I don't know if you did or not.
Well, contracts go to ABC, right, Ken?
But um.
It's contract.
It is, but water and sewer is a separate, uh, kind of separate entity, right? Aren't, aren't they supposed to, I, I don't care. I'm not on water and sewer. They gotta pay more, you know, that's up to you guys. But I'm just saying, uh, just to keep things consistent, shouldn't the utility committee have, have at least reviewed it and said?
Why accept them?
Huh?
Why accept them? Well, I just wanna make sure, like, what is this for the operations?
Well, it's, it's a budget that we're responsible for, it's labor and all that, so it should be something to look at.
I mean, I would agree, but I could, we have a budget. I guess what all the APC do.
So I believe what this is too, is the wage isn't changing at all. We just updated January first, twenty twenty-five, so I should be clear on that one.
Oh, so there's no dollar in.
Nothing is changing. Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I shouldn't say that right away. So that's why they kind of with APC.
Dollar change or not, because when ABC looked at it, we talked about the verbiage. There was a, there was a issue in the verbiage that would have allowed an individual to get paid, I think it was double time if they worked a weekend, but were still working the regular time. Does that sound right, Ken?
Yep.
So if they worked a weekend on top of their forty hours, nor is it.
There was some, there was a, there was a way you read it that would allow them to double dip.
Yeah, it was a lot.
We corrected that.
Yeah, but otherwise the dollar amounts did not change at all.
It was just.
Yeah, I apologize. I shouldn't have said that. It was just that it goes from fact generated verse twenty twenty-five, just to update that part of it.
But it should actually reduce because if it's just the same contract as before, but. So they're not double dipping.
Yeah, we, we called there's no dipping.
Yeah, and I believe Mark said that, that never happened where somebody double dipped, excuse me, did double dip, but just APC cleaned that up just.
Yeah, it's like.
So carry that one, Billy.
Yeah.
So fifty-five dollars per hour, seventy-five. That's, that's identical to what it was last year.
I guess it hasn't changed that.
It's up to you guys. Alex, you're the chairman. You, you give the pass if you want to.
I'll bring it for next time.
I mean, I don't see the need to.
We're talking dollars.
Right, and Greg, would you agree?
Hey, we're not talking in dollars. That's already been pre-arranged on. I guess that's what I'd be interested in. The scars of budget goes, you know. That's decisions we should be making, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of our answer, so.
Yeah, it's up to them for us, so. For future ones, yeah, I think it's for utility. Maybe this could be a informational item and then.
Sure.
You know, doing budget and tax, you can look at, you know. Hundred dollar amounts and change that.
Yeah.
Probably fine with just getting this done, so we're not wasting time.
All right, I'll make the motion that we approve the part-time on-call contract as presented.
Second.
They have a motion, Alex Page the second, for the contract as presented. Any further discussion? Here you done. I'll roll.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yeah.
Alex Bedik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. All right, a wish carried, seven zero. Moving on, item N, union wage increase for a planning tech, no P.
All right, so um, we are looking to hire a planning tech. The wage previously, two thousand twenty-four, wasn't increased probably because of the performance we had of that person at the time. Um, so we'd like to bring it up to the same level as the comp clerk, the, the clerk. Please, you know, junior assistant and penalty duty clerk. So if we look at that second page, we just wanna bring up to twenty-four thirty-five. And this, this agreement, I do have a typo on it. I wanna fix. But once it's signed, um, I'm sure there's not gonna be a problem to me to solve with the members that are listed. Once it's signed, we'll keep going.
Any discussion?
Any comments? I mean, I know there's something in there. I mean, do we have someone for planning timing?
Yep, moving forward.
We have that.
Yep.
Have you spit operated?
Waiting for this.
Okay, that's kind of fun.
But I move if we adjust the wage of the planning tech union wage to twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents that's listed in the chart for January first, twenty twenty-five.
Second. A wish of my Alex, sent by Aaron to approve a pay, a freight change in the crying tech position to twenty-four dollars and thirty-five cents an hour. Any further discussion? Here you done.
Chris Bull.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
Yes.
Kent Reneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Bedik.
Yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. All right, a wish carried, seven zero. Moving on, item N, interim finance director. So at a APC meeting last week, excuse me, they uh, recommended that we, that the board approve an applicant, John Jacobs, for the position of interim finance director. This fellow comes from a hiring firm called Robert Half, and his hourly rate is seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents an hour. He would be a part-time individual working twenty-three hours. So he would work all day on Fridays and then some part-time days Monday through Thursday. He would also be available to come to board meetings to present um, financial data or reports, whatever, whatever the board might require.
Did you guys look at any of his references at all when you, is this with three APC?
This, well, coming through Robert Half, they pre-vet these people?
And just the only reason I ask is I actually, one of the places he worked, I know somebody really well, so I thought, call as a friend and say, would you recommend this person? And they flat out said, I would not recommend this person over. And uh, they said that people quit because of this person and when they left, they left a mess. And I'm just gonna not make any names because uh, people won't sue me then. So it's like, I'm just saying what I heard and I, well, I won't be opposing this person.
Well, I, I know we need somebody to fill this position. And one of the comments I was gonna add to this was a background check. It should be done. And if, if there's anything you find that you don't like, maybe he should come in for an interview possibly to discuss things with. But he, he didn't do a background check, right?
No, we don't do background checks on interim people. We've, I don't think we've ever done a background check on interim staff.
This is kind of a key position, you know?
Yeah, well, so is the mystery. We didn't do that with, with, uh, O D or maintenance. And I don't, we didn't do that, actually, we didn't do that with anybody that may have sent over for any of the positions that we had interim staff in the past.
I guess the other thing too that bothered me, why you just put John Jay? You know, that's kind of what.
Well, they all came in that way.
Did they?
Yeah, we had, we had another applicant that he was a little more expensive. He had zero municipal experience. And just to, you know, just also to be clear, Kelly mentioned it earlier, that, you know, but work on the, I guess, the applicants as they come in and ABC reviewed some of the finance director stuff before Christmas. Wasn't anybody there, so I started to look for firms that offer finance, you know, temp support. PA, we've used in the past. I called them three times. They didn't return any of my phone calls. I called Kerber Rose, which is a place here in town that does the same thing. Um, I talked to them on two separate occasions. On both occasions, they had nobody to help us based upon our um, perceived behaviors in the, in the background, in the area. And so these guys are from Appleton, so they aren't really familiar with our backgrounds. I think he, my thought was, hey, if that's the way that's, wants to step in and take a shot with us, I, that's kind of why we, what with this guy, this group, because I tell you, I'm not getting anybody. I am flat out not getting anybody.
This guy will come in, the other guy will work on the purple.
Right.
So that was a.
So I mean, it's rat wheel, we can terminate whenever. If, if we get the guy in here and get things going in the right direction, maybe train some people. Or if we can find somebody that, on the next go-around of permanent people, maybe he can train somebody on some of this stuff. But I mean, you know, you read his resume and man, the guy's got twenty-five years of municipal experience. I mean.
Will he attend board meetings and community meetings?
Well, you gotta remember, he's only twenty-three hours a week, so.
Because he has to answer questions, you know, wouldn't mind stuff in front of.
We'll have to, we'll have to see what kind of time he's got. Right now, the big focus is bank recs. None of that stuff's been done. There's even some holdups on some checks because nobody can seem to figure out the allocations correctly. You know, like um, here's a good example. So the bill for utilities, right, gets split up between this building, the park, the fire department, police department, they all get a share of that bill. Right now, the staff member doesn't know how to make those adjustments. And when, when she's asked to reach out to the previous finance. And when, when she's asked to reach out to the previous finance director, and the finance director offers assistance, and then doesn't take that assistance, we have problems, so. So we are, you know, you talk about being at the, you know, in the red zone for football analogy, or anything in your, if you're cat hanging by the, under the string, we're at the end, man, this is it. If we don't take this guy, I don't know if there's gonna be any other guys, quite honestly. I'm not saying, I'm not saying this is the best guy, I'm not saying I, I'm saying he's not at all hundred percent on you're ra, 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 and all this other stuff, I mean, this is what we got to work with, and I think, I think we need to take this guy out.
Well, I think we should give him a chance, because we don't, like you say, don't have much choice, but we should do the background check and get some kind of a dialogue with him as far as what's his, what's his story in all this, and he might work out real good, I don't know.
Yeah, and he's, he's oiling for part-time, he's got two other part-time gigs. You know, he's, he's a part-time guy over at the Marshall Medical Center, he likes that job. He does this part-time thing, you know, childcare, losing, he likes doing that, so I mean, he's just, he just, at first, they weren't even, he wasn't even gonna apply for this job, the guy was telling me, I talked to this guy named Kate at Robert Half, she said he wasn't even a bit interested, but he started looking at some of the issues that we've had with, you know, like, lease leaving and all that stuff, and kind of where we are, and how desperate things are starting to come. I think maybe he kind of felt sorry for us, because he turned around and agreed the one account helped us out, so.
We are a pitiful bunch.
Ash, Mike, Kyo, what do you guys think? And we heard what Ken's thoughts are, and Chris's thoughts, what do you guys, who are on the right side of the hearing thing?
Well, like I said.
ABC did recommend we hire him, or recommend the board hire him.
Yeah, well, we're at a point now, we gotta, we need to resolve it. Those that were now on, or we ended now, the third full box is of reconciliations and whatnot, being a problem date when it needs to happen.
I did find that he can start as early as Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't know how many options we've got, plus, you know, status of the village, I think a lot of people in town, and my wife included, would probably kill me to even attempt applying to that job after I leave the board, and so I don't know what else we can do.
Well, he might, he might be able to do some training with two of the other people, that's nice. Not the gain, not the loss, so it'll work out.
Right. Yeah.
Well, then I guess I make a motion that we consummate the contract with Robert Half for John Jay to become our interim finance director on a part-time basis.
All seconded. And a motion by Kelly, I think by Craig, to approve hiring John Jacobs as the interim finance director through Robert Half.
Um, don't we, on a contract like that, have to have like a dollar a month, or?
Yeah, I said his rate was seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
Well, yeah, but like a total of twenty-eight.
Twenty, twenty-three hours, sweet.
I mean, we're looking to maintain this position, I mean, I know we can terminate any time, but.
This is not gonna be a long.
Take what we get, and.
See, if it was open-ended, there was no end date.
Okay.
Until we hire someone.
Or they choose that. Or until we choose to terminate.
Okay.
Or they terminate themselves.
Right.
All right. Any other discussions? Very good, very good, call it off, please, Jim.
Chris Gold.
Yes.
Chris Iden.
No.
Kent Reneski.
Yes.
Kelly Coyle.
Yes.
Alex Vedic.
Oh, yes.
Aaron Mishka.
Yes.
Craig Mortensen.
Yes. I thought somebody was answering for you from the audience.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to item O.
Okay, so this agenda item is regarding the ambulance service R F P, as you can see in the write-up. Basically, as a summary of where the ambulance subcommittee is at right now, you know, we've tried through a lot of components of the feasibility of the ambulance service, as you can see with the summary. I know the ambulance subcommittee attempted to try to get R F P out for a third-party review. Don't administer it, that's not happening, full-time administer. Then, you know, with the votes regarding the ambulance purchase agreement, with the opt-out clause, despite the no clause regarding that, and the inability to get that passed, there was no way to get the long lead time item in, so basically, the ambulance subcommittee voted that we didn't think it would be feasible to implement the ambulance service by January first of twenty twenty-six. So we needed a solution, at least to buy time while, you know, this is probably dependent on the election and whatnot, but to ensure we have ambulance service for the village beyond our contract for year twenty twenty-six. Now, it had been noted at numerous meetings, as well as part of the proposal, for starting a formular ambulance service, that there are improvements that really should be made to our ambulance service contract. The subcommittee has investigated a lot of those issues, you know, there's a long list of them. I know a fire chief has compiled some of these, just through operations, but not just the fire chief, others in the fire department, as well as the law and subcommittee. For example, there are issues like, are you being billed a resident rate or non-resident rate? There's a lot of holes in that. How was the reporting on response times? We found there are a lot of ambulance calls that are showing up as a zero-second out-the-door response time. That is a few in the system there, but those zero-second response times are not in fact zero-second response times. They range between an order of two minutes and eighteen minutes, so some of that data needs to be built up. Another issue that has been flagged is the training. So the contract currently, as it's written, states that the fire department, our EMS staff, with the former fire department, need to be trained quarterly. They've, on average, been only trained once per year over the last three years. These are just a few of the issues in the contract, but effectively, there's nothing in that contract that would hold Riverside accountable to meet the requirements of the contract, besides, well, hold a nuclear option, where you, where you have to cancel the contract. However, the committee didn't want to go too far into this whole R F P process. So the committee voted that January first, twenty twenty-six implementation was not feasible based on the votes and makeup of the board at this time and where we're sitting. However, it did recommend that, because of the holes in the contract and some of the issues that have been seen, that the village go out for R F P, because we've also received another offer at a lower price than what Riverside had from Safer. But drafting an R F P, usually it's done by the fire department, but it's overseen by a committee. The ambulance subcommittee has not been given explicit, I guess, an explicit blessing from the village board, that that's part of their responsibility, that they should oversee that R F P process. So the ambulance subcommittee, then, what this item is, is seeking guidance on which committee or committees should direct the R F P process regarding the contract for ambulance services for year twenty twenty-six. And as you see, you have A, B, and C, those are the three that we've mentioned. Does R F P process be overseen by the ambulance subcommittee, by CLIP, or by a joint effort from the ambulance subcommittee and CLIP?
So how bad is the current contract? Is there enough issues with it that requires a whole?
It's pretty, it's pretty.
Oh, okay, I would, I would like the fire chief to chime in as our.
The contract is pretty blank, there's not a lot in it that protects the residents of this village. My suggestion that we make changes to that for that protection.
Pretty general, quite vague.
Correct.
Well, I guess what I would say is, Alex is kind of right, that this, this doesn't go under the review of the ambulance committee, it's more of a CLIP item. But I don't think R F P is appropriate, I think it's, we discussed this a few meetings back, that we have good service, excellent price, if there's issues with the contract, I think the chief should bring up the CLIP to review, CLIP can pass it on to the board, we'll, we'll see what these changes are, and see if they can be worked out. I mean, an R F P is, we only have two choices, and we talked about this before.
No, we have more than two choices.
Well, who else?
Bruce Moseley, as well as Wassa.
The Wassa, where's their nearest ambulance place?
Wassa.
But isn't that kind of far?
Well, there's more than just the choice, right? If you want to make edits to the contract, make updates, you do R F P with, as part of. It's not, it's not just selecting the.
We've got real good response times, we got super price. I, I would wonder if there's anybody in the state that gets a better price than us. Maybe there is, but not many.
Well, we received, we received an offer at a lower price.
Well, yeah, because then, if that forces River, we discussed this before, too, it's not a wise choice, because in the long run, you know, you are concerned about Riverside jacking up their price, but if, if these other guys undercut them a little bit, and then we go safer, and then Riverside is forced to merge, then, then we really are out of luck for a competitive bid. Because Moseley's really not, doesn't have the standards of Riverside, also is too far away. So this, these, basically, were our two choices, were Safer and Riverside. And Riverside's been treating us good, and it gets back to business, you know, you take care of the people that take care of you. And if, if there are some issues, that should be a contract thing, and like I say, probably CLIP would be the appropriate place to review those changes.
I, I seem to recall Riverside saying that they don't need us to remain soluble. So the, what you just described, that if we went to Safer, or ended up going to Safer, that, oh, Riverside couldn't make it, and they'd, they'd end up getting pushed into that as well. But based on Riverside's words themselves, they don't need us. So it would behoove us then, it would behoove us then to put an R F P out, saying exactly what we want, and have, and have two, you know, offers, honest offers, seeing who can provide us the best service.
It is a, just a quick question for Teresa, and I don't live in this realm, so I just gotta ask. Back when we did leave Safer and go to Riverside, you had a lot of issues with Safer, for the reason to go to Riverside. Is that solved, or?
Some of them have solved, and some of them have moved to Riverside.
Oh.
No.
I mean, that's my, I don't know what, you know, what changed.
Actually, I picked up the other night, being at my first meeting, the response times. And I didn't, wasn't aware of the actual response times that were being told, they're providing us, because some of them may be way off. And I'd be interested in getting the actual, those response times, and we kind of talked about it, then take a twenty-five percent average and see where those response times actually are. Because if we're comparing five minutes to fifteen minutes, I mean, that's a big deal.
Yeah, there's a paramount, just for background, so the response times are being reported by Riverside. Looking at the scatter plot of the response times, there's a lot of response times that come in at zero seconds. Well, they're coming in at zero seconds, because anytime there's an ambulance change, it clears the value, and it's being reported as zero. So basically, the fire department has to dig into all that data, now to figure it out, you know, what are the averages of those zeros that are there? I know you had mentioned there were some response times on those, but it was eighteen minutes out the door.
There was one, yes, that was, they missed their page entirely, and the police department had to go knock on their door to wake them up, because they missed their page, so very early in the morning, procedure patients, and they missed us.
So, I mean, and no, no service is perfect, but if the data, we don't know exactly how bad the data is, but there are a lot, a concerning number of those zero-second ones, that need to be evaluated, to know what those true numbers are. But the point is with the contract is, you know, there, there's enough things that have come up where it's either in contract and not being followed, for example, the training for our, our department. Well, there's nothing in the contract, like, there's not really any recourse if they don't provide that training, other than us canceling the contract, which, you know, it's a useful tool, but if there were other items in that contract, for example, that are more reasonable, hold the provider accountable to that? Because, I mean, let's be honest, you'd only cancel the contract if it's truly catastrophic, because you wouldn't have a, a backup plan, right? I mean, so I have a concern with only having that option to enforce the portion of the contract. The billing issues are significant, it's not really closely specified in there for resident versus non-resident, and what the appeal process is for being billed incorrectly, that can be a significant amount of money for someone on a, on a ambulance call. You know, there, there are multiple other things that were brought up in there, but I'm just bringing up a couple highlights. Point being, you know, obviously, the board, one has to agree with going R F P. I mean, again, going R F P doesn't mean you're accepting any of those contracts, it's giving proposals. Now, there's not a cost to go to R F P, but also, who should be driving the bus, because it, you know, ambulance subcommittee didn't want to overstep, so that's what we're seeking.
Well, it sounds like the CLIP's gonna get it, with some of the merging, what issues are the problem? And I guess, then come the board, see what the R F P, we just want to try and work out the issues. Because right now, I don't have a really good feel for what all the issues really are related to. Issues with the current contract, have you ever talked about some of those?
There were about fifteen, twenty items, I guess, we picked on the other night. Don't want to just look at me changing them, not that they're gonna go for it, but at least we can offer and see it for him. I mean, from my perspective, right, it's up to the board to decide on this, because it's a unique scenario, but the ambulance subcommittee's been researching a lot of the details of the ambulance services work, so.
Well, I think I can agree with Chris that that's the most logical route, is to go. Well, I think I can agree with Chris that that's the most logical route, is to go, take, take the contract issues, CLIP, once CLIP gets a feel for, for what's going on, bring it to the board, where we can take a look at it and decide if this is something that can be worked out, or, or if, if it's not. But until recently, in the last few months, we've just had all good reviews, you know, and that one, once the, I mean, as far as the people, the village, and the service, and all that kinda stuff. And now, now we say there's, there's 20 different issues, I think we should take a look at those issues.
I guess, my question would be, why should the ambulance subcommittee not be involved in that? They've been doing research on it.
Well, CLIP does the standing committee, deals with that, and it may be a new set of eyes, they have a different perspective.
If they wanted to have a joint meeting, yeah, because there's too much that they've done in the ambulance committee that they've got information on. An application at all to CLIPs.
Well, ba- basically, I assume Teresa's the one who's pointing out these problems. Well, she should be able to summarize them, and I can report, and.
I mean, if the CLIP wants to have a joint meeting with the ambulance committee, I mean, they could do it, if they wanted. I'm not gonna tell you, you gotta do it. And I'm sure any of the ambulance committee members would certainly welcome the CLIP meeting, to talk about the issues concerned. I mean, it's, would have to mandate that they create another bad hoc joint committee to.
I don't know if it's creating another committee, it's direction of what the board wants to see.
Well, I, I think I'll move that we assign CLIP the task of reviewing the contract with the alleged complaints here, and, and then report back to the board.
And how were they gaining that information, is how they gained it?
From Teresa.
If they wanna meet with them.
Oh, well, if, that's up to them, you know, but that's, we don't have to direct that, that's up to the CLIP chairman later, you know.
I'll second that. So, I have a motion, I can second one myself, to, or can CLIP review the issues with the current ambulance contract? Was it with, from?
I believe it's actual terminology, is alleged complaints. What'd you say?
Yeah, I'd like the actual motion, yeah, on that one.
Can you read that?
I do disagree with that.
Motion to assign CLIP the task of reviewing contract with alleged complaints and report back to the board, and maybe with the CLIP, if they, up to the chairman of CLIP.
Okay, Jen?
Yeah, I got it.
I see your re- six film.
Well, I mean, I think it would be ridiculous to not have the ambulance subcommittee involved myself, but, you know.
I'm with the alleged contract.
Oh, I mean, I have, I have that alleged complaints, but, you know, I mean, that's his motion, I think. Teresa.
It's just to not use the talent we have here in the village on something that two people, people work on, it's kinda stupid not to do it either. We can sit here like we did tonight, and argue about a bunch of crap, and, and, and nothing all night, for use of the brains we got. And I guess I'm gonna butt up on the word complaint, because it's just like before, it's, that everybody's been talking about they were complaints.
Well, it's not, it's not the word complaints that bothered me, it was the word alleged.
That's, that's actually.
Well, okay, not, they're, they're real complaints, okay.
I would say there are more, probably more concerns, like complying than concern, but if you want to be completely honest.
Okay. Well, you want me to change my motion, or?
No, you, you know, I, I think we stick with the motion, I mean, or unless you want to change it. I mean, really, my issue isn't about, about what the dictionary says about words or the, or the verbs, I, like I said, I said my argument, that it would be ridiculous to not have the ambulance committee.
Change my motion, that we have this same task to CLIP, to review the ambulance contract with the fire chief, and determine any concerns, see if any concerns can be dealt with or discovered.
Do I have the ambulance subcommittee?
No, CLIP.
No, he just wants.
No, that, I'm not gonna dictate, if, if we're sending it to CLIP, that's the, CLIP's chairman, that's up to him, and it's.
Can you read that back?
It's not an obligation.
Okay. Motion to assign the task of the ambulance contract with, I don't know, I mean, with, you know, determine any concerns, and see if any concerns can be determined, and then dealt with.
All right, I'll see. Any other discussion? All favors say aye? Aye. Opposed? No. Motion, Jerry? Four, three, my best guess. All right, so you got some work, please. All right, moving on to item P, alcohol sales at the events and raffle license.
Okay, well, this was the issue we had the agenda item for, and it was intended that the police chief's report would be attached to that. Basically, the chief doesn't deal with, with this raffle ticket issue, which our report does, and whether or not there's an issue or not, it's just reported that the tickets have the wrong numbers on them. If that's true, it needs to be fixed.
Sean's email's in here that talks about the raffle ticket.
Right. And so, in the report, okay, recommended action, board should determine the proper course of action to take to correct the current unauthorized activities, and this might, this might include, get a determination from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue after providing them all of the facts, direct the police to find out why the raffle tickets are improperly numbered, task CLIP with providing an ordinance with language that allows illegal alcohol sales, and any, let's see, and then the, the actual violations that have taken place, send it to PFC for them to pass on, or do whatever they want, but the, between these items, that should take care of all issue.
Yeah, let's start with the, send it to the PFC, to start with. That's not our job either, we aren't able to do that.
Well, who does? I mean, some, somebody needs to make a determination, right?
Though I think you file a complaint. So, is my understanding that the PFC is similar to the, basically similar to the court, is that we can't assign or request them to take action on the items?
No, well, if not, then not, then we can at least, you know, deal with the tickets and, and getting an ordinance on the books.
Let's finish this here first, before you arrest them.
Yeah, they have a, they'll have a complaint procedure, an individual can make a complaint, but the whole purpose of having a PFC is that it's an independent body from the village board, because again, they're gonna deal with potential discipline or hiring, firing in an independent way from the politics of the board, that's why it exists. So, we wouldn't, as a board, send them anything, but they have their procedures, anyone can do that.
So, chief, were you able to explain how we had to have, how you had the glass door with the raffle ticket part of that original email? Because I guess we didn't talk about that.
No, we really didn't. This is a very cursory memo, it just really deals with the question of how they, you know, okay, what got into the alcohol sales, really, we didn't really get into the, I didn't really wanna take a deep dive into this, honestly, like I've got noted in here, it's a very cursory, excuse me, more administrative look at this. If you wanted some type of a full-blown investigation, you know, you were worried about criminal activity, then I wouldn't take this, you know? You'd go somewhere else.
Well, I think what you provided was good for the alcohol sales part of it, because you did exactly what the other group did, they, you follow the same steps they did, you even called the same guy.
Right.
You got the same response that the staff got. So, as far as that piece of it goes, you know, with what Lee had seen from the meeting that the three of us had, that issue could be corrected with some ordinance updates, and that kinda thing. So, I don't know, chief, you said you were gonna dig, use some of it into the raffle ticket thing?
Yep, yep, I did, and I actually have it, I can give each of you a copy of this, if you'd like. So, we, our raffle license, at the time that we got our raffle tickets, was effective from 4/1 of 23 to 3/31 of 2024, and I have that raffle license number here. I also have a copy of the email that I had sent to FSI, which is former specialist on Mozzany, to create those raffle tickets with that raffle number on it. My lieutenant al clocks picked up the raffle tickets when they were printed, I will be totally honest, I did not look at them at the time that we received them, he started handing them out, it wasn't until after I looked at all of this, but they were incorrectly printed, however.
So, they assigned with their own number?
Correct. However.
They assigned a new number when she reviewed it, and the new number didn't make it up to the proof for the ticket when it was printed.
Oh, was it the old, is it, so is it the valid number originally?
It, it is not our number at all.
Okay.
But the number that I gave FSI is our number, and it is the raffle license number that was effective at that time. The question, this is, this is where my concern came from, the question came up on a Facebook post of which I cannot see, because it came from a resident who has us blocked, the majority of the fire department blocked. The question was if we had a raffle license at all, and in fact, we do, and any raffle we have ever had, we have a raffle license for. I will be totally honest, the money that pays for this raffle license does not fund the fire department, nor the village funding, it comes out of my own pocket. Former specialist? Who, who can this, you know?
Yeah.
Me.
No, no, the tickets.
Former specialist, FSI, on Mozzany, we use them for a lot of our current.
Yeah, we use them a lot, too.
So, did they, they just printed it with their own number?
Correct. And I, 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 like I said, I will be totally honest, I did not check the tickets when we received them. Why? Because we have used them for so many years, I, I didn't, and that is my mistake. But did I do it without a raffle license? No, I did not.
So, Lee, is there any, what's the recourse on that? It wasn't illegal raffle?
Well, it is. I mean, it's a legal requirement to have the number on the tickets, but I mean, we had a license, actually, it wasn't unlicensed. So, I, I doubt, doubt it's gonna matter.
Then it will be filed in a raffle report, as I always do with the state of Wisconsin. I was told, per that post, that this fire department cannot have a raffle license, but as you can see, it is issued to the village of Cronewater Fire Department, with the state of Wisconsin, so we do have a raffle license, and we have that for many, many years.
Hey, chief, please, does PD have a raffle license, do you know?
No, we do not.
All right, so Ken, the other issue, you wanna, thank you, you all right, Brad?
Do I have any other issues?
Yeah.
No, it was just the, the tickets being corrected, and the.
So, I.
Ordinance to make the alcohol sales good.
Yeah, I think that's, again, too, we, like, we're gonna.
Yeah, I think, I think we should take that, so that we can, so we don't have this issue in the future, I think.
Yeah, it's, I think it's gonna be more of a recurring event, right?
Yeah.
Chris, can I, can I make a statement? Probably alcohol sales?
Well, can we finish the raffle?
I thought we did.
Maybe it should be issued to the village.
I don't know if the village can count one.
I mean, no, they can't have a license, right? But they.
Okay, maybe, maybe we check that, okay? I, there's, there's a lot of different ways you can organize a fire department, some are truly separate, and some are not.
We are an entity of the village.
Yeah, this is a department of the village entity, so, I mean, it's done now, but that would be something to check, okay? Because there are only certain eligible entities that get a license.
I had to submit our village ordinance to the state of Wisconsin, and I wanted to get it. As far as the alcohol sales, I, this was not my first choice to do, nor my idea to do. I seemed to be taking the huge blame for it, but it was something we were asked to do, and I said no, until we got the okay from the state of Wisconsin. At which point I said fine, and we will do it. We did not make a ton of money on it, I knew we wouldn't, and I had a lot of firefighters that dedicated their time that evening to spend at the movie, to make something in Cronewater better. And this is what comes of it. So, the next time we're asked to make something better, the answer won't be yes.
I do feel really bad about that, because the whole date night, movies in the park was actually my idea. I had to tell Kim, and Kim told Jennifer, and so, yeah, this whole, instead of the kids who said, hey, I wanna know a movie, I wanna hear a song.
I think it was a good idea, too.
Yeah, we'll see how that turned out, but, yeah. So, sorry about that.
It wasn't, it wasn't that, but.
Yeah, come on, Sean, that's a good art.
I wrote the email, I'm the one who brought it up on social media. I am her biggest supporter, I am his biggest supporter. This is not a edging thing, I did not do it so we could get people in trouble. The lack of action, and the lack of us knowing what to do on the board, is why this poor woman is sitting here upset, because the village has been letting this go on for years and years and years, and no one at any point in time said, hey, let's see if we're doing this legally. Teresa, I'm sorry, you had to take what you took, because you shouldn't have been harassed. However, we should have got answers when the village says, are we doing that legally? We should have said exactly what was in that report. We called the state, and the state said yes. Why did the state say yes? Because we probably asked the wrong question. We don't need a license, we need an ordinance. Someone calls and says, hey, does the village need a license? The guy probably assumed, no, you guys have an ordinance, you don't need that. So, we need to ask the right questions, and this is my point that I made earlier. We are harassing staff, we are terrorizing staff, our community is hating staff, staff is hating our community, this bickering back and forth that we've been watching online, wasting our entire night to get our point across, is crap. We need to stop this. You guys need to do your job. I'm sorry, Teresa.
It wasn't you that brought it up initially, but thank you.
Do you have a comment, Brad?
Yes. So, I know a lot of people believe that it's a good thing that the fire department is doing this, and the police department is doing this. We need the extra support, they need the extra funds, but we ask that it be done legally. So, we cannot get a license to sell alcohol in a municipality, we need an ordinance allowing the sale of alcohol on village property. Then it's not an issue. But we do have a couple other issues, and one of them is that the Wisconsin statutes dictate that you cannot go to Walmart or Sam's Club and buy the alcohol. It has to be brought from a dealer, I don't even know what they're, what they're called, but they're.
Wholesaler.
A wholesaler, okay. And secondly, that there must be a Cronewater licensed bartender on site at all times. Those are state laws. From there, we might have to consider the fact, like the city of Wassa has a fenced-in area, so that we can make sure that our children, et cetera, are protected from any possible alcohol influence, and other. Um, and other things, but I think we should at least discuss it so that they can continue to have these fundraisers and make the money for the programs.
Yeah, I was hearing.
I mean, quite frankly, I, I believe that the amount of money being raised by it, I mean, with this type of hassle, I mean, it's not just this issue. Everything, everything is always an issue. I mean, you know, I mean, I don't know how to put it, but, you know, I do think there is a group in this village, it seems like, do they want everything to burn? No, unintended, but, I mean, in this village, like, I mean, seriously, now we're going after the fire department. We have board members that have advocated defunding the police department. I mean, the, you know?
How much are you talking about, Alex? You're calling, you're rambling on stuff that doesn't even apply here.
No, a budget meeting. I mean, it's the same idea, right? Let's just attack everybody.
Lee, you got a comment?
Yeah, just, just to leave it behind, uh, the print company screwed up on their raffle number and the ticket. She had a license.
Did we get a refund?
The department. The department revenue barely thought they were good enough to get a license. So, and that's their lawyer's job, not mine, or, you know what I mean? I don't think you need me to look into that then. Um, so I'm leaving the raffle ticket behind for now, okay? I, I think that's it.
Yep.
Um, alcohol license, so let me, uh, there is a temporary server's license that you can get for these events, okay? Um, so that exists. Uh, I just want to say that, you know, Sean's email was mostly correct. I mean, he had a lot of information, right? Um, you can get a class B temporary license to also sell wine products. A lot of places get both, but you gotta have an outside entity to do that. So you find some club or whatever that.
Like BMW or something?
Something else that qualifies as an eligible entity. And if you partner with them, they can get all those licenses. Um, and you can do it that way. Or if you do the municipal ordinance, you can do that, then our employees can sell, but it's only beer.
Okay.
So just so you're aware, beer is a wide, you know, it's a melt beverage. So there's an incredible amount of things that are technically beer, just so you're aware.
Yep.
Okay, so that's, that's that. We need ordinance and/or a partner organization. I'll look for both. Um, so you've got options. I just want to explain how this, um, this is one of the suggestions in the, in the report is ask DOR for an opinion. And there's, there's basically no one to ask. So there, there used to be a guy who worked there. Name was Roger Johnson. He's been retired for over ten years. Every alcohol licensing question in the state went to Roger, and he was not replaced. So the people that, I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, but the people down there that answer the phone now, you know, are no Roger Johnson, you know, they wouldn't claim to be, they're actually revenue agents. So they're in charge of enforcing the state side of alcohol licensing issues, which is mostly collecting taxes. And those are the people that will actually confiscate liquor at a tavern that wasn't bought properly if they figure that out, you know? That's what they do. And bless their hearts that they're picking up the phone if someone has a licensing question for a municipality, but they don't really know that very well. And I've, I've seen many examples of misinformation coming out of there. Um, so I, I just, I understand why they tried to contact him. And if you didn't know all this backstory, you think maybe you got good info, so I get that. But I can tell you personally, I, you're not, you're not getting good info from there. So that explained how this mix-up happened and the consistent advice was given, but it was by a guy who's, that's not really his profession. So that, that's how, that's what I'm, I'm DOR. I, I wouldn't count on them for a lot of good advice. Apologies, you may have to ask an attorney, okay? Cause you're not getting that on a DOR now, unless you can figure it out yourself.
I mean, I, I do think a lot of this, though, I mean, right? And people's right, just free speech and stuff. Part of a witch hunt, I do think. I mean, I don't, I always support the fire chief. There's some things that need to be updated in the future, I'm fine with that. But let's, I mean, let's be frank, like, right? She's trying to do the best she can for the department. Has been under constant assault by a minority that's very vocal in this village. And I think that is very unfortunate and shame on some of the people and some of the treatment she's received, not just on this issue, but other ones. There's been a, a push to, there's a, there's a term out there, they call it doxing, where you release a bunch of personal information on people that really doesn't have anything to do with their professional duties. It has happened to previous staff. It has happened to current staff. You know, not to name all names, but, you know, like, again, it's between being right and correct. And frankly, that's a big problem in this village, is that we are unable to work with each other and everything becomes nuclear quick and nasty and personal, um, and way out of bounds. That's the unfortunate piece of this. Instead of trying to make real positive change in this village, we keep getting in our own way with this type of behavior. And it burns people up. We lose good staff and, you know, we lose committee members, we lose board members. Obviously debatable. People think about me, but, uh, not just speaking about that and talking about a lot of people involved with the village. And I think that, that will be our village's undoing. And that has been our undoing.
Okay, so. So is anyone to recommend that we send this to CLIP?
Well, that's what I was just, that's what I was gonna add, is that are we sending it to CLIP to take the first crack at the ordinance?
Hang on, you have another comment? Excuse me. Yeah, our current ordinances are chapter three twenty-five, the pre-minimal. Sub one's okay. Sub two is illegal. I think sub three is okay. And article two is entirely illegal. So you need to actually do some work on this chapter. Now, it's not a ton of work. The ordinances that we do need, uh, we could do this municipal, you know, thing so we could serve beer in parks. You wanna do that one? You wanna do, you're required by statute to have a provisional section, which we don't. So you throw that in there, there's a handful that are required. Uh, most people now authorize a clerk to issue beverage server licenses. We'll all have to go to the board if they're qualified. So she gets a background check and it's fine, they can just issue and you don't have to have a board. That's kind of a big deal. Remember, we had that, that year where we forgot to issue licenses essentially? And we had the police force rush out provisionals, um, which ordinance we didn't have. But, but, uh, I did the best trickery I could, and, and we didn't want to leave, uh, these people operating illegally. They're all operating alcohol businesses, right? So we did the best we could, but, yeah, you need to reform this whole chapter. It, it's not that much, but if you can do it and describe CLIP, you go ahead. Or I could just write them. I can send a draft.
Well, I don't know, you'd probably have to do that for a while now.
But yeah, just, just having those ordinances fixed and, uh, this issue is fixed for the village to, you know, blow forward.
Well, then I guess we're sending it to, to CLIP to start to review?
Yep.
Is that a motion?
Uh, yes, I make the motion, we send that to CLIP to, uh, review the ordinance, uh, to make sure it is, uh, accurate and legal.
Compliant.
Compliant, there you go.
For our second comment, Bush, I made a second, that we send this alcohol issue to the hook to create, uh, review the ordinances and make sure we are compliant. Any further discussion? Hearing of all of them, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Item Q, deputy treasurer, Sarah Fisher. So Lee, Sean made a comment earlier that we can't do that. Treasurer doesn't have. Is that true?
Yeah, that is true. Um, I understand how this got on here, though.
Cause we didn't have any money.
Well, at one point, okay, so at one point, it was, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
We inquired specifically, who's a deputy, who's not? How many deputies do we have? And we were told that we had deputies. They were deputized, they had to host the office in a folder somewhere. Um, they found it.
And Sarah was a deputy treasurer already.
And then it turns out that nobody was deputized.
Right.
So I don't know how that, I don't even know how that could have occurred, but it did.
Wait, wait, um, she was.
The clerks were deputy, deputized.
Okay.
But Sarah was never deputized as treasurer, even though we told Lisa to do that.
Okay.
Uh, and so we were told it was all done. So then when Lisa's gone, Bobby's gone, we're looking who, who's deputized for what.
Right.
Everybody was a clerk, nobody was a treasurer.
Okay, and, um, do we need that on the org chart too, or deposition?
Probably.
I mean, I don't, I am pretty sure.
Sean's saying no.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
We at least need a list of who they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine.
We need a treasurer. I would have ended up being a treasurer just because someone's not here, someone else staffs a meeting, you know, you've got an actual treasurer. And they wouldn't be big jobs, cause we're basically separating out the finance director for now.
Right.
So, yeah, but you do need to appoint a treasurer, and the treasurer can appoint a deputy. That's how it works.
But, but this person we just agreed to hire is not actually a treasurer, right? He's just filling in.
We could ask him if he'll be a treasurer.
I, you gotta bond them and everything, I'm not sure how that's gonna go.
Yeah, I don't know, you can do that. So I, I guess I move that we just take no, no action on, uh, the item Q.
Is that good?
No, it's good.
You, you don't need a motion on a no action.
That's true.
Okay.
Uh, but at some point, we gotta find a treasurer.
We're working on it.
Okay. We thought, just to explain, we thought she was a deputy. And under the statute, a deputy can automatically fill in if the treasurer even resides. So that's how we thought we were getting past this.
Right.
And then we find out she's not deputized, so, anyway. So, yeah, you need a treasurer at some point.
All right. So we'll leave that bridge, I guess, when we get there. All right, moving on, item seven, consent agenda, it's just a village ordinance from January thirteenth. Is our motion approved?
Uh, well, I got the change we talked about earlier on G, that the motion was to not hire a special prosecutor and that the instructions were just signed instructions. Um, they weren't voted on. They were not part of that motion, so that's the only correction I can see.
I didn't want to comment, I have a real desk to bed. Well, I think we need to review the bits, the audio to determine. So I, I remember hearing it as it's written here.
I reviewed the audio. And it's, I remember it the same way you remember it.
Well, I remember seeing it, but then we backed up and said, wait, wait, that's, that's two motions.
That's one more issue to get, so.
And then we, and then we split it, so.
I'm gonna make a motion to delay action on this. Prospect or send, just send it back for grab, not correction for DOR. Verification. All right, moving on to item number eight, previous meeting minutes from commissions committees. October twenty-first, plan commission minutes, questions or comments? Right, been the plan commission. November eighteenth, plan commission minutes, questions, comments? Play good for those minutes as well. November nineteenth, annual subcommittee minutes, questions, comments? May fifteenth, five minutes. Out of number nine, closed session. Consideration for motion to convene in closed session, which was taken by one senior. Consideration for closing conversation, boards, evaluation, and public. People who wish to rely on service, access, or show ability with staff, compensation for duties. Is there a motion?
Well, hang on, I, I got a comment. Uh, there were some complaints about APC holding a closed session with Coyle dissipating and discussing what amounts to a financial gain, you know, a bonus for his wife.
Ken, Ken, hold on.
Yeah.
Is this what I'm doing right now?
No, I, I try not to look at it.
Yeah, I'm passing up the backpack, cause I'm not just in a closed. So it's all down there.
Okay, but you're not, you're not watching this somewhere.
My wife says I don't have this.
Well, I don't.
That I am staying for both votes. So. That I am, that I am staying for both votes. Is there a motion?
If you want to chat sometime, just let me know on the air.
Your second, your second?
Yeah, absolutely.
We need a closed session for discussion, hearing of alcohol.
Chris Wall?
Yes.
Chris Iden? Kent Torneski?
Yes.
Kelly Coyle?
Yeah.
Alex Bedwick?
Yes.
Aaron Miska?
Yes.
Craig Mortensen?
Yes. All right. Closed session, we're gonna. The action was, we discussed what happened. That's not true, we had action. The action was to tell the village board what happened.
Right.
All right, so we're back, we're gonna, so the motion to convene, somebody needs to make a motion to convene back in the session.
I'm going to go to open session.
I'll say it.
Good motion, I hear you.
Right, to convene for open session.
Right, we don't need a motion to go back to closed session.
We just need a motion, we don't need a roll.
Oh, okay, that's right.
So we have motion, second. Everybody, any discussion, any discussion, hearing of? Uh, all of them say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Well, action after closed session. I make a motion that we recommend.
Uh, I got some discussion here.
Follow them.
All right, subject?
Closed session. Well, what's the subject?
Well, on the subject of, of a bonus for employees.
Okay.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Well, yeah, we're getting raised, you.
Okay, well, as I pointed out, you got people filling in for these, uh, positions, but they're still only working eight hours. And that doesn't seem fair to the taxpayer to have the taxpayer pay for people working, uh, within their job description, even though they're doing other tasks. And that is part of their job description. So I don't think the taxpayer should, should pay extra for that. But on the other hand, they are putting an extra effort in. And I myself, uh, I don't know what I got in my pocket. I, I probably got five hundred bucks. I'll lay that on table. If you guys want to chip in five hundred, I think that'd be a nice bonus for them. But I don't think we should be generous with taxpayer money. And if we really feel they got it coming, I think that'd be a good gesture for it to come from the board.
Any comments?
I think that's ridiculous.
I gotta make a motion that we recommend a one-time bonus for office staff consisting of Sarah, Jennifer, and Kim, and one of two thousand dollars. All two. To accentuate their above and beyond efforts. Who was the second?
Craig.
Craig. Motion by me, say my Craig. To provide staff two thousand dollar bonus for their exemplary work. Above and beyond. Any further discussion?
No, I fully support it with, uh, what they've stepped up to take on.
All right, Jen, roll call, please.
Chris Wall?
Yes.
Chris Iden? Kent Torneski?
No.
Kelly Coyle?
Sustained.
Alex Bedwick?
Yes.
Aaron Miska?
Yes.
Craig Mortensen?
Yes.
Motion carried. Five, two, one, no, and one of step two. Consideration for items for future agendas. Attorney RFP. Was supposed to be on tonight, and there was a miscommunication.
What? What was?
Attorney RFP.
Oh, um, well, you hired that Wild Riley guy, why don't you ask him? I think we mentioned. I think we mentioned that before.
Yeah.
They, they may be interested in, in the whole, whole walk of wax.
Well, they would, and they would have sent something, but that's, you know...
Well, maybe they weren't asked.
They were. Next. Anything else? The others? Was the video on the ethics code adequate? We all need to discuss that.
The what? The video?
I sent that link to the, the video on the ethics code, just goes through the basics. Is it in my email?
Yeah, it was fine. It was fine.
I looked for it. I guess, yeah, I didn't know.
If you haven't watched, go ahead and watch that, okay?
I just wanna give my look at.
Okay, well, I was trying to give you a free resource, all right?
Maybe I didn't, maybe I just didn't see it.
I saw some deer in headlights there from it.
I don't think I got it.
Well, we had this public comment. I don't understand this public comment on ethics, and so, I don't know if it's still misconception or what, but I was trying to clear it up, so there was, right?
Oh, yeah.
Perfect. Anything else last call? All right, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Anyone else?
Second.
You're gonna do it now, Alex. All right, motion to adjourn, one by me, and second by Alex. Any further discussion, or you know, over, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everyone.